Yeah, that's.
It's like my fault.
Isn't it like the outlook on life and can be my fault?
I'm just glad sometimes it is not my fault.
And I was really excited about the team.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Welcome. Um, so I, let's see, this is May thirteenth, twenty twenty five. This is a meeting of the board trustees for the town of Villavista, Colorado. Um, tonight's meeting is going to begin with a work session, which is um, going to be run by uh, planning and public works department. So I assume you two have decided who goes first?
We have a dance routine, that's what's.
Alright.
No, I'm gonna go through um, first here with the off-street parking review.
Okay, great, thank you. Marika.
Thank you.
Alright, well, for the evening of the mayor, trustees, Marika Top, planning director. Uh, this evening, I would like to talk about uh, a general off-street parking review. If you've had a chance to look through my presentation, it's a lot of information to get through in thirty minutes. Uh, and really this, the intent of today is just to have the start of this conversation with um, hopefully some direction from the board that uh, we can dig into a little bit further with a more detailed presentation in the future. Next agenda will provide you context as to why I'm making this request. Um, the purpose of our off-street parking requirements, looking at briefly at our existing parking requirements, talking about two of our parking alternatives. And then hopefully, if I can talk fast enough, we will have time for trustee staff discussion at the end here before I pass it over to Sean at about six thirty. Again, uh, this evening is just to receive some general overview and guidance on our parking alternative and off-street parking allowances. While we go through this presentation, I ask the board to consider the following questions. Uh, are existing off-street parking requirements sufficient? If we eliminate or reduce parking, is this unilaterally across town? Are we looking within specific zone districts or geographic areas like Main Street? Are the existing parking alternatives sufficient? And is the fee and lieu collected sufficient? So those are kind of our four overarching questions for this evening. And feel free to hop in at any point and interrupt and ask questions. Alright, so I know that we've talked about this with the three recent uh, fee and lieu alternative requests that have come before the board. But what is the purpose of off-street parking? Um, and our code defines it as such, this is copy paste from the code. Um, but we are looking to avoid and mitigate traffic congestion, encourage multimodal transportation, reduce stormwater runoff and heat island effect of overly large paved areas, and then to provide flexible methods of responding to our transportation needs. Um, I think that this is especially appropriate, this parking lot picture that I've taken here. And Joel, you can jump in if I'm wrong here, but that's not an approved parking area.
It's just private property.
It's just private property that has over time been allowed to be used as off-street parking. But in the future, I'm sure um, as we continue to see interest around Main Street, these lots will develop and and what will happen to all of these cars. And so this is just a very small snippet of some of the parking considerations that we have around Main Street currently. Um, it's a pretty large surface parking area. And for those that um, have been around in the morning for elementary school traffic or in the afternoon, this is hugely um, important for pickup and drop off. So these are just things that we have to think about as we continue transportation and parking planning into the future. Have to be able to read my signs. Okay, uh, so why reduce or eliminate off-street parking? And I think that these are the same kind of arguments that we continue to hear from applicants and that I continue to hear from applicants as we're having some of these discussions. But um, the biggest one being that minimum off-street parking requirements directly add to the cost of development. Uh, and we hear that this reinforces a reliance on driving and car ownership. And basically, and this is true, if you can't park it, you can't build it. That's that's kind of the conversation that we have at this point. That's that's the most extreme snapshot of that. Obviously, we've got a number of parking alternatives. But if we can't meet our parking demands as required by code through just the general requirements or through those parking alternatives, ultimately your development cannot move forward. And so we continue to hear it, does the town owe us smart growth? What do we, you know, are we really caring about density and affordability if we continue to push our parking requirements? And I think that these are all really important things to consider and think about. But we can't think about them within a vacuum. Which is why context is important, uh, especially here in the valley, especially here in uh, Villavista. This is not a one-size-fits-all solution. Right now, we do not have this efficient multimodal uh, infrastructure network. And whether that's buses, uh, e-bike rentals or allowances, um, bike paths, sidewalks, recreation trails. We don't have um, the infrastructure within our own community, let alone to get to uh, other JT County communities, Salida and Poncha. And so really, if we start to talk about removing parking requirements when we know we live in an area where there's a reliance on vehicles to get around town and to get around the valley, um, we're putting the cart before the horse in terms of the types of solutions that we need to to look through. So this can't just be the next step is all of a sudden we're waiving parking requirements. That would be my recommendation to you. I think that we need to kind of look at this in steps and probably explore the bigger picture of what our multimodal infrastructure looks like. And and really, where we're seeing a lot of these demands around Main Street, probably doing a more in-depth parking study and an analysis of the parking resources that we currently have. Management of on-street parking, so this is another thing that we've heard. Um, you know, I'm providing on-street parking, so why can't that on-street parking not be dedicated specifically to my use? And really, when we talk about on-street parking, we're talking about public right-of-way land that is owned and maintained and managed by town. And so if we talk about dedicating on-street parking spaces to the adjacent uses, we're talking about possibly a permitting system that's going to require allocated staff and a management system. And um, I would say um, enforced enforcement systems, um, and increased enforcement systems. Right now, we've got two code enforcement officers. And I don't know, Brian, if anyone else um, manages uh, enforcing off-street parking right now. But um, obviously, they're doing everything else that they have within their scope of work on top of looking at parking considerations. And so if we took a hard left and just started to say, sure, we'll allow on-street parking to be dedicated to specific uses, who's who's enforcing that? Um, and the last thing we want is our calls to the town from residents saying, I can't park near where I live. Um, and so that's just something that I want to get ahead. And then obviously, these studies that I recommended, parking and transportation studies, so that we can make the most informed decision, they cost money. Um, and I, you know, I think that the town is in the process of applying for a grant for our transportation master plan. Uh, the last time I was updated was in two thousand and four, so definitely um, looking forward to moving forward in that process in the future. But um, given that the last time that it was a, you know, revisited for adoption was two thousand and four, a lot has changed. And so I think that we need to look at this more holistically. And obviously, looking at the entire community as a whole at one time would be pretty taxing and probably an insufficient use of our resources. But if we could maybe focus our efforts on the areas where we're seeing the most common requests for off-street parking um, and on-street parking alternatives. Alright, so I just popped this in here really quickly, um, obviously knowing that we didn't have a lot of time this week to go through this. But when we talk about our current code requirements and that question of, is this sufficient? Is this excessive? Is this deficient? I wanted to take a snapshot of our residential uses. And so everywhere across town, your parking requirements are based on your use. With the exception of our originally platted Old Town lots, there is a codified requirement that says, if you've got an Old Town lot, which are the twenty-five foot width lots, it's one point five spaces per twenty-five feet. So I have a single-family home that develops on an Old Town lot. They ultimately have to provide two parking spaces because you can't provide half a parking space. But the idea is, is that if you combine two of those lots, you have a duplex, it's three spaces. Um, so it's a little bit more forgiving. And then looking at our our table requirement, I played around with this a lot. I went to other municipalities and plugged in some of their numbers to see if we were following their code with some of these recent requests that you've had for fee and lieu alternatives. Would it be more or less excessive? BV be the other five or six communities I looked at every single time? Whether it was by like one or two spaces, we were uh, had a lesser requirement or even sometimes up to eight to ten spaces, lesser requirement. So I don't know where the wiggle room is in this in terms of if we're saying we want to provide um, an opportunity for affordable development or attainable development and we think that parking has an impact on that. I just don't know that there's a way to reduce the standard requirement. But I do think that we've got some alternatives for credits, which I'll talk about later in my presentation.
So you're saying that we actually have less than a lot of people do?
Yes.
Interesting.
When did this go into effect? As part of the UDC twenty eighteen?
Twenty eighteen, okay.
Which communities of five or six, do you know, without a soft hand?
So I looked around the front range and then I also looked at Salida as well. And so um, really just cities like Aurora, uh, Fort Collins, Stedford. I tried to find places that are pretty progressive in their off-street parking requirements, just to see. Um, consistently, there's allowances that if you live within the proximity of a list up or if you live within the proximity of some other kind of transportation opportunity, there would be a reduction. But just the standard requirements across the code, BV um, consistently came out on top.
Can make the correction.
Yeah.
So Andrew, this is the UDC is twenty eighteen, there were some parking requirements before that. I just don't know what those were.
I'd love to see how we stack up compared to like Crested Butte or some smaller community because they seem to be just getting into some parking issues over there on that side of the divide.
Mm-hmm, yeah, other communities with affordable housing problems like Durango. I think Crespe would be good, Summit.
Crested Butte changed their code where you can camp in town.
The county changed that code around that two years ago too.
So the reality of the situation is that there is a cost and a hidden cost of parking. Um, this picture was pulled directly from a parking uh, document actually that Libby um, sent me a couple of weeks ago um, from the state, just on general parking guidance and how we can look at reducing off-street parking requirements. The reality is, is that the more off-street parking requirements we have, the less developable area you have for development. And so obviously, looking at this unit all the way to the right here with the highest parking requirement, we've got the the highest amount of parking and obviously the smallest building. And then as we look to reduce our parking spaces, um, which I believe, yep, is one space per unit as opposed to one and a half spaces per unit, the building gets larger and then that reduction gets even larger. So the reality is, is yes, and really within our form-based code, and I know we've talked about this before, parking is our only restriction to density. So we don't have anything that says, if you live within an R-two zone district or if you're building, you're maxed out at ten Ds per acre. Instead, our code says, you're maxed out. If you can build it and then you can make it work within the confines of the code, you get it. And so parking ten is usually that equalizer or that that benchmark that um, sets density within the development. I looked into this, um, and I spent quite a bit of time looking into this. I will say that a lot of what I found was, were news articles that didn't reference their sources. So I couldn't go into this and and the amount of detail that I would like. But I did want to share this, that I looked through Colorado specifically. Uh, service parking generally costs around five thousand to ten thousand dollars per space. And structured co- parking can do uh, can be over-doubled that, so twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand dollars per space. And this would include the material costs, the land value and the construction cost. This is especially important as we talk about, is our fee and lieu, we're, our fee and lieu too small right now with that twelve hundred dollars per um, parking space. In talking to Joel, my understanding was that the intent was that the twelve hundred dollars is the material cost. Um, that's where that original twelve hundred dollars was pulled from within our fee schedule. But really, we know that that does not cover the cost. Um, and if the town is to take that money and invest it into future shared parking resources, it really does not cover the cost of even developing a single space within that shared resource.
Well, Marika, I was thinking about that a little bit um, on one of my bike rides. And it seems like in my short tenure here, it, based on, you know, approving it for the library, we'd almost be penalizing them if we increase the cost on that and make it tough on the things that we like for in lieu versus, you know, the example that we got from last last meeting.
But we can always create an exception.
Right, yeah.
And part of what I'll get into later, because I thought, I thought about that a lot. And this is the other thing too, is that we want affordable housing. And I think the conversation that I'd like to get into is what level of affordable housing? How many units and then what AMI are we looking for to say, this is enough of a benefit to our community? But then do we really want them to also have to pay the fee of alternative? Probably not. I think that that works against the intent of trying to support affordable housing. And so that's where I think we could shift to a credit type system, which I'll talk about a little bit later. And this is a fact that I pulled from that document with this photo or with this graphic. The financial burden um, associated with the developer having to provide off-street parking is often passed to those that end up living there. Um, for the, for rentals, this can be an increase of two hundred to five hundred dollars each month to offset that cost of parking. This is especially significant, um, because not in BV, but I will say generally, not everyone has a car. Uh, and maybe in BV, not everyone has a car. Obviously, we know that we're pretty dependent on our cars here. But the reality is, is that there is a very real cost to parking. I think the flip side to that is that if we waive the fee for developers, there's nothing to ensure, and this is not coming from a malicious place, this is just the reality. There's just nothing to ensure that they don't pocket the the benefit from that alternative. So um, we don't have anything that can hold them to making sure that if we provide them a waiver, that that waiver then ends up with the end consumer as well.
Yeah, it's like when they're saying, well, we can't make it affordable if you build denser, but there's no guarantee that they're gonna.
Right.
Make it affordable.
Right, exactly. So looking at our parking alternatives within the code, we've got a number of parking alternatives. One is a previous pavement material parking alternative, which nobody has explored yet, at least since I've been here. Um, and then we also have codified parking reduction incentives. And so this kind of speaks to that credit system where I'm wondering if the board would like to entertain or consider possibly shifting uh, towards. So there is a current code provision that allows multifamily development specifically within the highway commercial zone. You get a thirty percent reduction in your parking, which then in turn gives you that density bonus. But all of your units have to be affordable, every single one has to be affordable. And um, they can't be at more than a hundred and twenty percent AMI affordable. So I would like to look at possibly exploring and expanding that further. The two alternatives that I'm going to dive into a little bit deeper here are the bicycle parking and then of course the cash in lieu. Alright, so our existing requirement for bicycle parking is that all bikes, bike spaces must accommodate two adopted bicycles. When we're talking about non-residential uses, you're only required one bike space uh, for your resident, non-residential use. And whether that's a grocery store or a library or a dog wash, they all have that shared one off bicycle parking space. I'd say, I'd like to revisit that because I think some uses, prob- commercial and non-residential uses have a higher biking demand or a need for bicycle parking than maybe others. Um, it doesn't have to be a one-size-fits-all, but that is how it's currently codified. And then single-family may provide a bicycle parking in lieu of one space, um, which is always an interesting thing to think about. Um, you know, we've got folks that are developing uh, single-family homes plus an ADU. And instead of providing a parking space for their ADUs, they'll provide a bike parking space. But most folks I talk to say, I keep my bike inside. I don't want to leave it on bike racks. And we're seeing a lot of folks take advantage of this bike rack allowance across town. And maybe that's a good thing or a bad thing, but um, it's not common for single-family residents to have their own private bike rack outside their home. So I don't know if that's a miss within our code or an oversight within our code or if that was really the intent to allow that, but just something to consider. And then multifamily uses have to have a space per unit. And again, that's two bicycles can fit in that one bike space. So when we talked about the Cedar Street condo proposal that we had before us a couple of weeks ago, they were required with fourteen units, one bike space per unit that fits two bikes each. That their base requirement is twenty-eight bike parking spaces. That was just their base requirement. On top of that, they use the alternative where they can count one bike space as one-half of a vehicle space up to two vehicle spaces. And so, and and they took advantage of that to help meet some parking alternatives. And that had them presenting a thirty-six bike space proposal. Bicycle parking is awesome. I love to see it. I think it's really great. I think what I find myself struggling with is just because we provide bicycle parking doesn't mean that we have sufficient infrastructure for bicyclists. And I really think that if we're pursuing a, an alternative that would support multimodal transportation or support bicycle transportation, I do think that there should be another ask from the developer, whether that's a fee and lieu, not quite to the extent of the off-street parking fee and lieu, but a fee and lieu that would then be contributed and perhaps earmarked for future investment into multimodal transportation. And that's just one idea.
Yeah, I don't know if I would like the idea of bicycle parking instead of actual parking.
Yeah.
Like that's a loophole. Thirty-six units for fourteen units.
Right, it seems really excessive, yeah.
I feel like.
Like everybody.
Some bicycle parking is good, but I don't like the idea of treating it for actual parking.
I mean, I, I think it's fine like up to half or some number, but like, I think, talk about that. I do think though, I want to acknowledge that like, we're planning this housing for fifty to eighty years from now, right? The weather is not going to be the same here in fifty to eighty years. Technology for cars will not be the same in fifty to eighty years. And we're going to continue to face a problem where every time we decide to prioritize car piping over anything else, it lowers demand for multimodal, right? More development with more cars means it's less safer biking. Means we have less demand for buses. So at some point, we have to be comfortable with the discomfort of choosing multimodal incentives for housing, even if right now, this is a car-dependent community, because it's not going to change unless we change it. You know what I mean?
I see what you're saying, but because of where we are and what draws people to this town, I don't know if we are able to change it, right? The people that come here appreciate the river and the hiking and being thirty minutes to. But it, most activities outside of the actual town limits require somewhat of a vehicle.
Yes, and I think like in town, I think a lot more people would bike to school, bike to work, bike to the grocery store if it were safe. If it were, they have best cars on the road, right? And so like when we're just adding more and more and more cars, we're removing the incentive towards doing the alternative. No, I'm not saying no parking, I'm just saying. I think at some point, we can make a switch to incentivizing more than just parking and getting a little more comfortable with one parking space per unit instead of one point five. Because how many of us, I I know a lot of couples that would have one car instead of two, but we have two because we have two parking spaces and we can.
Right.
So like, we could make the flip. I think people would follow us, but we need to be willing to.
I think the idea with that, I like the idea that I think we have to have the infrastructure and the transportation before we change the requirements. Because if we're changing the requirements and there's nothing in place for people to use, then we're just inconveniencing people and creating a hardship. Um, where if we're, you know, if we're focusing instead of on lowering parking and then we don't have anything for people to use, then we're SOL. But if we focus on transportation in that and then we change that, then I think we are in a much better place to support people. You know, I haven't had off-street parking for over eight years now and I have three vehicles, four kind of motorcycle. It gets interesting. And so, you know, it's, it's difficult in this town to, parking is an issue, even in.
Uh, well, that's what I was gonna say, that was like, I don't think parking really is an issue. Like, we have a lot of parking on on-street. Like, it might be difficult at some times in some areas, but generally like even for for town dinner, for B D Strong, you can park it downtown even if you have to walk up, walk. So I'm not saying get rid of it, but I do think like, we need to, I do, I would like to push a little bit.
Well, and I think that we're going to see it become a problem. Where land that becomes developed, that like perfect example. We're just free-for-all using private property. I think town should really look at considering investing for the long-term of public parking. That that we invest where we can, maybe use the in lieu, is to invest in that with transportation on multimodal all day, right? So I think that right now, it's not an issue, but it has real potential to become a relatively big issue pretty quickly with as much as we have coming online.
I think Andrew has his hand up.
Yeah, I kind of want to hone in on just the practicality of bike parking leaving kind of the overall um, like trajectory of the future out of it. I'd be all for encouraging more bike parking in businesses, but there, three of our trustees spend a lot of time on on bikes. Chris, the most of us all. If you bike a lot, you do not leave your bike outside if you care about your drivetrain. It will corrode faster than anything. So I think people who really spend time on their bikes, do not park your bike outside at home. Like, go to the business, I'd like to find a spot to park. Bring it home, it's inside if I care about a bike. And especially if it's my only transportation, it is not staying outside because I don't want to be doing drivetrain maintenance every week with the rain and the cottonwood seeds to get in the grease in the summertime and the corrosion in the wintertime from rain. So I think the bike parking in businesses, yes. But foregoing like adding boatloads of bike parking at multifamily at high-density residential, thinking people are going to use it, just not going to happen.
The ones I leave outside are more yard art than anything else.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think getting rid of single-family loophole, that doesn't make any sense to me. Especially if for ADUs, it's becoming like actually the homeowner gets two parking spaces, but the ADU gets none. That seems like kind of a mess too. Uh, I do think though, like sometimes as a board, we have the tendency towards worrying about what-if problems instead of problems we have right now. The problem we have right now is affordability, right? And I think like parking comes with a real cost to supply and affordability. And so I think it's just things we want to keep in mind, but I do think we as a group tend to worry about hypothetical. Parking gets harder or this person is having a hard time living there. But like, the market can also meet that demand. If there's a multimodal with one parking space per unit, I'm, I'm sure people will still live there. And like, they can decide if they want to live there based on whether they have five cars or not. You know what I mean? So I do think like having a diversity of options is good. And right now, we don't actually have a diversity of options. We have high-density parking with low-density housing, but we don't actually have the alternative anywhere.
Well, Marika, you used the the Cedar Street example from last time. Um, I don't want to open a new line of conversation, but maybe as a placeholder because the public that came in, their issue seemed more about traffic and not off-street, on-street. They were more concerned about the school and and stuff. So I was wondering if, you know, we need to look at a different zoning buffer around the school or something. Um, you know, both of my kids went to urban schools that only had street access and were very busy. It can get pretty, pretty scary, pretty ugly quick for sure, that type of experience when there's a lot of traffic in a school that doesn't have like a little pollin for like the high school done.
So I just want to kind of wrap it up to a certain extent and kind of pose the question of how do you guys see furthering this conversation? I think there's a number of different ways. We can go, the last round we did, staff uh, kind of designated thirty-minute work sessions. Additional work sessions came out of it. We can have an hour-long dedicated work session to dive further into the discussion. You can kick it to P and Z. You can um, kind of see where we end up with uh, transportation master plan that's going to take a while. Um, so I just want to kind of be conscientious of time and wonder what does this conversation next step?
I have two quick suggestions.
Okay.
Can you go back to your first, your second slide? We had question four about the cost for parking fee and lieu. So, second slide that had the parking lot for Cool River. So when I walked here tonight, there are twenty-six cars parked in that parking lot, quite a few more than there now. Two of those lots are for sale for three-ten and three-thirty, so total price is six hundred and sixty thousand. I'm not saying we do this, but I'm saying just as a starting point, if if the town were to buy those two lots and put forty spaces there, that would be about sixteen thousand dollars per space. So there is a demand there. There's twenty-six cars parked there right now. Just as a round number for our fee and lieu, our fee and lieu has no way getting us anywhere close to coming up with a solution.
Right.
So I'm proposing, like you guys look at that, okay, what's the price for? I mean, you can't buy a lot in Johnson Village and Park there. You have to, you have to look at the cost of a lot near Main Street. How many spaces can we get there and then back out?
How many spaces can we get there and then back out? That's a cost per space. That's a defensible amount for fee and loan, and that's going to be in the sixteen, I'm guessing in the sixteen thousand dollar range.
Yeah, I think, I think that's something that we can all agree on is that the fee and Lou is is not adequate.
It's not a fee, it's a free loan.
And that if it's a much higher. Fee maybe plus people, we kind of use that as a loophole to get cheaper housing.
And then my quick second suggestion was, we have a number of um high-density developments that have been built or are being built. Like the Boulders, you know, the Midland um Collegiate Commons, some of these places over here. I would just like to see a data dump of how many units and how many spaces per unit do we have at these places? What range has been built? That's why I was asking about the. UDC, because it seems like this has been a little bit. Hit or miss in a number of places around town with the number of spaces per units. I'd just like to see just local data. What are we working with here? What what complexes have higher spaces per unit or higher, higher spaces per unit and? Lower? Just like to kind of know, what do we have? What are we working with here locally?
And then we also have public parking spaces like Paul's Lot and and down around the soccer fields and. All that. I've I've heard before that those are about a thousand spaces, but. Maybe I'm off on that.
And those are technically only for during day use.
Certainly continue the discussion, but like the quick action I have is, okay, let's do a little. Slight back and acting calculation. What would justify a good, a reasonable fee that would position us to actually do something with that money in terms of a parking?
Oh, it's a work session because I haven't had a chance to speak. And I do have, do have comments, but I know we're already going past time. But I do think we need to spend further time on this and I'll leave it at that.
Would you be open to doing that with planning and zoning, maybe a work session with that?
Or even taking it down to planning and zoning and see what their input is, because their input is extremely valuable as well.
I agree with that.
And our value here always could be transportation. Um, you might rent a place and be perfectly healthy and. Three years from now, you might be going through chemotherapy and have to drive to the Springs once a week. And if you're coming home, you don't feel like parking two blocks away so you can get to your apartment. Um, in the really congested areas, we need parking. I I don't care what anybody says. How many people drove here tonight? I I mean, in our valley to get to some things that you need. You need to drive. I'm not going to ride a bike to slide. I'm sorry. I didn't get by the time I got.
Marie, I do think though, like you have good suggestions, yeah, what we could do, and so I would like to see if we do a work session. Specific recommendations from staff around things we should change and what you, what you all think the recommendation should be. I think you've heard us. You know what we're thinking.
To wrap it up, um, I think we do have a fee uh. Uh, fee schedule change request that needs to happen with rec on the twenty-seventh, and that's one of those things when we. Make an amendment to the fee schedule, we go ahead and. Make the rounds and say what else, what other changes do we have? That is on the twenty-seventh. We can probably turn that around pretty quick. Um, as far as a work session, we have this realm going through kind of the end of May into June. I think that provides opportunity to get back to. P and Z, and then by that time we'll bring it back.
I think definitely soliciting. Advice for P and Z is a big deal. This is all they look at.
And they did, I presented them three different topics to present to you all tonight, and this is the one that like far and above, they said this is the priority, so. I will go back. Great, sorry.
You're gonna go back and tell them that we pointed back to them.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, sorry, it was too much information for thirty minutes.
So Sean, I think that leaves the rest of the time to you.
Yeah, alright.
Oh, good one, yeah.
If you guys, if you guys are fine with that, just I think I'd like to just. Do my staff report and we can spend some time talking about some of the things that we're working on, I think. Um, I timed it, I'm gonna read it verbatim. Did I tell you it's gonna take about twenty-seven minutes? Can we do one more box speed? I'm kidding about the verbatim part, but I do think that. I have a few things that just kind of included it, and I think as we kind of go through the sections in here, like. If feel free, we can, we can talk about it as we go through them, I think I'll. Uh, and then, yeah, so it'd be, it'd be great. So as we kind of go through these sections, um, yeah, feel free to uh. Things if if you, if if there's something more that I can provide. So, um. A while since uh we've looked at this or we talked about this together. Hasn't changed too much. Um, the one interesting thing, I've been helping uh Rachel Patinger. Work on an updated water um demand and water accounting report that she's. Uh, working with the upper arc uh water conservancy district. So since the. Um, water resource master plan, the the unaccountants improved almost three percent. So that's um information, I think it's. Uh, two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, somewhere in there, maybe twenty, the last four years, and so. Kind of saw that in some of the accounting data that she was providing uh to Chris uh in that report, so we're getting there. Um, we've um. Had the um representative from Ivy League come to a couple water advisory board meetings now, and I think that we're. Maybe looking at, you know, doing something. Um, possibly in the future with, you know, their. Infrastructure and how we're connected to it or how they're connected to ours and the relationship. That, you know, um, we have with with their infrastructure. I'd like to have a few more conversations with with them uh moving forward, but. Um, yeah, we have, we have a lot of pipes that are leaking in the water. And, you know, when you look at their water loss based on the amount of people that they have, it's, it's way worse than our. Than our system is collectively. Um, but I maybe circle back around onto that a little bit later in in the uh. In the, in the staff report presentation, but um, but yeah, pretty, looks pretty good for April. Every time we see a good-looking number, the next month isn't quite as uh. But uh, we'll take fourteen percent. We haven't seen that for a while, so that's, that's great. Um, some of the updates in the water treatment plant, it's kind of bullet point items there. Um, getting close to wrapping things up, we uh. Thinking the uh punchless items and substantial and closeout items that were working from Rice Lakes, we extended the uh. Um, contract into July, hoping that we're actually done in June. But just want to make sure that we have everything covered with them. Um, working with J H L in the um. In the uh, um, gallery expansion phase that we. Um, connecting the infiltration galleries to the new water treatment plant, kind of in the same, same boat uh with them. We're getting close to wrapping things up there. Got a few things to iron out with J H L. Um, but we're getting there, uh, a few punchless items and a couple discrepancies on final billing. As far as uh. I didn't want to say challenging or frustrating or whatever, but so I came up with working things out, you know? Finding each other, I'd say not to. Not to downgrade the talent it takes to play a harmonica. Or a banjo or something like that, because it's extremely challenging and. Hard to learn how to do that, but we're, we're kind of conducting a symphony, so we went from a groundwater. Water treatment plant to a surface water water treatment plant, what comes with that is a whole another level of. Uh, your place in the universe, awareness, reporting, um. It's uh, it's, it's real, yeah, so um, we're, we're getting through that. I think we've done pretty good, um, been pretty. Um, proactive with all of this, um, been um. In a good place to have good relationships with the agencies that help us do that C D P. Apparently, um, our engineers have been really helpful. Al's been um extremely helpful, um, helping us get. Get things kind of dialed in and understood, uh, Microcom, so does their SCADA work there. They're testing us, I'd say, but um, they, it's really important work that they're doing. Um, and and J D A and and yeah, our, some of our community members have been very helpful, um. I know that uh, we uh, we have a lot of support from C D P H E. And um, some really good feedback and really good insight and really good information coming our way on how to do this, so. Um, it's really hard. It's really, really hard making water every day from time to time. Don't want to look what. Manta's in a tough spot this week. I mean, you just see those things that that make it, you know, into. The news or in the paper or on the radio, and you know, those are the things that water operators think about or try to avoid, and I say. We did a pretty uh. Uh, pretty good job trying to nationalize some of the things that, as we were constructing the plant, that. Try to anticipate things that could go wrong and how to avoid them or anticipate. Um, things that, that. Might go wrong if anyways, been very thoughtful process moving, moving through the, the project and we're still doing it. We're still doing, we're still working through it. The uh, yeah, the uh, working out stuff. The operational changes, procedures and reporting, and the new gallery wells are still developing. What I'm talking about there is the. We're basically flushing the lines um using the. Um, new infiltration galleries filtration and earthbank um filtration. To produce um a higher, a cleaner water turbidity is a little high in those areas, so. We'll be probably flushing those um until we see the turbidity level drop. I don't know when that will be, but we just assume that probably through the course of the summer, we'll be flushing. Um, the cool thing is, is the O G I G is running through the new water treatment plant. Um, coming through the harm school units there, and it's a high-yield producer right now, and so we're not going to have any issues. With the uh, with demand as far as we can tell right now. The way that the infrastructure was installed, there's a, there's a lot of water out there that's. Getting into the O T pipes, and so um, we'll, we'll be okay for a while, I think. Um, till like twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine, and then we'll, I'm joking about that. Um, there's a couple, couple cool pictures of what those filters are like, and I do think that a field trip is, is um, is, is.
Is that the, is that the flux capacitor?
Yeah, no, I, uh, it's not the flux capacitor, but pretty much, right? It looks like that, yeah, it's, yeah, there's, yeah, those are the. The housings on the outside and those uh series of filters, compliance filters that are packed on the inside, so. We have four units and each unit could do that. Um, I think Joe told me today that we were running about. Four hundred and fifty gallons per minute demand, and it's kind of like, now, do I want to run one or do I want to run two? Sometimes so. I think he kicked on two and just got kind of a nice easy, easy push going through them. Um, but yeah, it's, it's exciting, it's um. As a, as a water operator, I'm pretty excited for, for to see this project. I wish I had more time to kind of hang out there and, and. And be with, be with the, the water plant more. I think uh, we're, we're finding each other. I think uh. Couple weeks ago, Joe told me that he was actually running the water plant, the water plant wasn't running him, so um, yeah, so we're. Um, we're doing it, so we're, we're drinking the water that's coming through the water treatment plant right now.
Do we need to look at our personnel out there to see if we need to add a person?
Yeah, we're looking at that. We absolutely are. Um. Talking with Brian about that as well. I think we started talking about that going into this fiscal year as well, so um. Looking to see, I think there's some other. Yeah, the, the outside world is also demanding for water operators, so whether you're at the water plant. Or doing a section of the Boulders or, you know, uh. All the other things that come, there's uh, those guys wear a lot of hats, and so.
Can I make a quick comment on that front? This is kind of my day job at C D P A T. I just want to speak to the. The requirements we have now for this type of plant, this surface water. Treatment plant that is designed to treat groundwater or influence the surface water. The operational. Staffing and reporting requirements are an order of magnitude more than they were with our old system, so there, there is a demand. On the time of the operator that is not insignificant.
Is that reporting automated or is it something where somebody's having to do data input?
The more you automate it, the more you can fly the plane into the ground. So there is definitely, uh, there, there's just a lot of, there's just a lot more on the operator to operate this type of a treatment plant.
So we don't want to burn out, Joe, or you?
Yeah, we, we don't, yeah, I think uh, yeah, thanks, Andy. It, it's real, it's. And it's uh. Yeah, it's a lot of pressure to, um, it's a lot of uh. It's a new thing for us. It's a new thing for our, for staff. And um, they uh have a lot of responsibility and uh, yeah.
And we're, we're gonna tour out there at some point when uh everything's cleaned up in Rome.
Yeah, it's, it's looking really good, so we should try to get that scheduled.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Since the old days. Abandoned.
Been out there a time or two and it's, it's uh, it's gonna be, it's cool.
Yeah, you'll still be able to see remnants of when you came out. Um, um. I, I, I stuck the entire um C C R, the, the water quality report in, in. Um, in my staff report as well. I don't, I don't know if you guys have ever, ever looked at these. So uh, required once a year to publish this report to our community. I think the deadline is July first. Of course, Joe gets it done on May first, that's just who he is, um, but uh. The uh, this report basically covers, has like four categories in it and talks about the water source. Where they come from, uh contaminants that could be introduced or contaminated that. Are, are um organic, in our, inorganic um compliance. There's a compliance section in here, and there's some educational components. Kind of skewed throughout the, or, or throughout the report. Um, so no violations um on our report this year, but. That's some pretty useful things that might be helpful for some of the questions the community has and, you know, and if you'd ever want to. Spend some time looking through this. I know that Joe loves talking about this kind of stuff. I do too. Um, I don't know as well, but the uh, it's long and there's some pretty easy cheat sheets in here. It, you know, gives some of the levels of the things that we tested this year. Actually shows what the uh, the maximum levels are, you know, that, that are allowed, so there's some pretty easy. Um, things to follow through here, but there's also some, some words in here that I can't pronounce. Um, but uh, but yeah, so.
Basically the water treatment plant, though, is taking out the things you wanted to.
We don't have much in the water in the first place.
Yeah.
From my inorganic.
Turbidity is the big thing for us. My turbidity cloudiness. Yep. Yeah, that, it's, it's really pure water, um.
Do you drink the tap water or do you filter it?
I drink tap water.
You would be fired if you said otherwise.
If you were a baby, drink it or filter it?
I will say this, the new treatment methods are filtering the water of the plant.
Here.
That the water plant comes out of the tap.
Um, when you're testing this, where are you testing it? Are you testing it? Up there at the plant? Are you testing it like?
Yes.
What it's like when it goes through the system as well?
Yeah, 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 we'll, we'll test, we'll test for age water and some of the harmful things that come with that and are dead-end mains. Um, we test, um, we take four samples a month. At representative sites within our distribution systems for cat tea sampling, uh, we do raw water and um. A gamut of sampling at the water plant, so we'll get. Natural levels of fluoride readings from, from the raw water that's coming into the water plant, nitrates, things like that as well. So, yeah, we, we, we sample entry point and the distribution. So, and there's a, there's a ten-year plan that kind of, that's issued to the state that you gotta do all this. Stuff every ten years, and so not everything gets sampled, you know? That we sample, but it's a ten-year cycle and that we run through and then we start over. But every year we're constantly, yeah, um, lead and copper, things like that, that's happening a lot more. There's been some. Regulatory things that have initiated more, more awareness on that, accounting, some of our inventory work, you know, that we've done with that. As well, so, um, but yeah, I think. as well. So, um, but yeah, I think, um, I think, um, these are really cool. I, I think we'll be okay. I think I, it's somewhere that communities over ten thousand people might be required to do these twice a year at some point, maybe coming in the future possibly, but as long as we stay small.
Yeah. Yeah, it reminded me, um, would it be difficult to add fluoride? Isn't that something that we could easily add at the ending product? I know it's something we talked about.
Yeah.
He's like five, six years ago.
Yep. Won't be easy.
It won't be easier.
Won't be easy. I would tell you this, on page eight of the CCR report, fluoride's on there and we sampled entry level. And the average was point three.
Yeah.
The MCL is four. So that's my maximum contaminant level. So I can't, I can't recall off the top of my head what the actual recommended dosage for fluoride is, but we're just slightly under half of that.
Okay.
With our natural fluoride. So think about that. Um, fluoride's um, study a little bit more if you want to and we can have a conversation. But I think that, you know, having, having said that, what I will say is, um, from a treatment standpoint, it's very dangerous to handle.
Yeah.
And, um, I don't know. I think the mindset on that might be shifting, um, possibly. I don't, you know, I don't want to get into the weeds on anything, but I just say, I think that there's some states that, states that are looking or have already banned.
Yeah, I know. It's not really the time to introduce.
CCR says point seven milligrams per liter is their recommendation. Is ours in milligram per liter?
Yep.
Yeah. So point seven is the recommendation.
Okay. So, yeah, it's about what you said. It's like half.
Just a little less.
We're at point three.
And the, the, the capital cost to actually add the chemical handling facility is would be pretty expensive.
Yeah, I thought it was just something what you could add in with the chlorine, but, um, obviously I don't really know what I'm
Yeah, I, I, I will say this. I know that, uh, you guys know Rick Hertz, and he was public works director from like, I don't know, ten thousand B C to teen, no, to, Roy was, Roy hired me, Roy retired in two thousand thirteen. So we saw the OG um, direct filtration plant actually had a fluoride treatment, um, station in the Cam building. And so I know they were putting fluoride underwater at some point, probably in the seventies, maybe eighties. And then they abandoned it. I don't know if it was cost, but, you know, I just, I just see the old infrastructure that was there for it. I think for me, I think the, I think the, the, the key thing to, to recognize is that, you know, there's, you know, you know, point three coming into our system naturally, um, averaging, I think we've seen that pretty, pretty consistent over the years. So anyways. Good stuff. Great, great, great talk on that.
Yeah, yeah, it's interesting.
Maybe we could get the health department to confirm what they're doing in regard to encouraging, uh, the use of fluoride toothpaste.
Yeah, I remember there was, you know, definitely a dental community push. I don't know. Maybe it was like five, six years ago about that. I remember, but, uh,
Yep. I'll give Roy another kind of mention. Um, we talked about that once and it's great to have institutional knowledge and people that have, you know, the people in the water advisory board and, and people like Roy, um, Roy had thought at one point that it might be, you know, it might be if, if, if it was something that the community wanted, it might be something that maybe you know, we could invest in and, and provide, you know, maybe fluoride treatments for our community versus actually treating the water with fluoride, because I'm not sure that everybody appreciates that. It's, it can get yeah, I think the conversations can get interesting.
And we talked about it, I can think of three different times where it's been like heavily discussed since I've been here. And every time there's a strong contingent, we need it and equal strong contingent, no, absolutely not. So it's just, uh, those conversations.
If you wanted to distract from every other issue, we could
Yeah.
fluoride, anti-fluoride.
Kind of off the record, the, I don't know if they still do or not, but the Beano Vista drugstore. Um, if you ask the pharmacist for fluoride, they have little fluoride pills that if you think you need it, you can, you can take it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not a scientist, but I never ate cavities until I lived here, but I also wasn't going to the dentist for a while, so.
Correlation's not causing.
But I do talk to the dentist and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, we talk to him too.
Yeah.
It's good, good, good information. I think it's, it's good to, um, listen to our community. It's also, um, useful to be able to see what these reports say, you know, and kind of show some, yeah, show some, some pretty good information.
There's a lot of things that I don't really understand. But it's very, that's why we have Andrew.
There needs to be a plain English primer on the front. Your water is really good.
It's really good water, guy. It's like, really good.
And your operation keeps you in the whites.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'll just run through the rest of this, um, real quick. The, uh, sidewalk project is going really good on Marquette Street. We're, we're halfway done and our investments are right where I would anticipate they would be as a kind of an example of what we're replacing over there. I don't think that's the exact same spot, but I thought it'd be great visual to kind of show.
Four and a half.
That is a section of coffee.
It's looking real good. I live right over there, so.
Yeah, I love it. Um, so far we're fifty percent done and we're about, um, let's see, fifty nine.
I walked on it.
We're about, yeah, it's about, it's about seventy five to seventy nine thousand dollar investment, which is probably um, based on the original OPC that we got from the engineers, we're probably under by maybe a hundred and fifty thousand by the way we approached the project. So, um, yes, I'm gonna see, um, the yeah, um, few things. Yeah, getting ready for a lot of things that are happening right now. We're spending a lot of time at the rodeo grounds, doing some improvements, checking out the grandstands, looking at anything that needs to be repaired out there. Rodeo group is working on the, on the pans and the corrals on the inside. Um, Chris and his team got graduation banners up last week. It's awesome. Um, we're looking for a parks department supervisor, keeping Chris on board, not losing key, key people, but we are, you know, right now we're currently advertising for a parks department supervisor. Um, got some great applications, it looks like, coming in. Um, couple big weekend here. Arbor Day celebration this weekend and town cleanup weekend. So, um, come out to Public Works and bring me, bring me your trash. Take care of it. Um, I think, I think the one thing I just wanted to kind of key on before we get through this, um, two things, we're working, we're phasing in the, the sign installs at the river park. So we've got a few signs up, some of this, some of the items that we want down there are still backlogged. We haven't gotten it. Gotten them in yet, but we're, I guess we're facing in some of that work there. Um, trying to make sure that we have some time for um, strategic planning, long-term or short-term planning. We've had our hands kind of full with the water plant projects since I started in this position. So for the last going on eight years, we've either been um, planning, studying, pilot studying, preliminary designs for the water plant and and that goes the same for well three and well four. I think the next page is going to be looking at infrastructure, distribution system, pipe, transmission pipe, service lines, things like that, useful life of some of those pipes. So try to get an idea of what those investments are going to be. So we may be able to fill up. I, I think, I think the big thing for us is just trying to find the time and the bandwidth or me getting organized enough to know, you know, give it to KLJ, give it to, I'll give it to you guys and start budgeting for next ten years for things like that to be replaced. Um, and then working on little things, um, little things this summer to kind of help with the, but everybody shut up. The amusement park that Safari opened in Beano Vista. So little things like trip hazards, um, things striking done, things like that. So anyways.
Uh, kind of, I didn't leave any time for questions. That was my strategy.
Very well done.
Very well done.
Thank you. Okay, great. So we, um, let's take like a three minute break. Evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Beano Vista, Colorado. It's May thirteenth, two thousand twenty five. The time is seven oh five P M. Um, Paula, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Payne.
Here.
Mr. Mike.
Here.
Mr. Rice.
Here.
Mr. Rosenauer.
Here.
Mr. Rowe.
Here.
Mr. Sturm.
Here.
And Mr. Swisher.
Here.
Please join in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the water of the United States of America and to the water which sustains one nation under God and in this world, with the liberty of justice and sorrow.
Please, uh, silence yourself if you have them. I'd like to, um, read this proclamation. Um, it isn't about Lyme and other tick-borne diseases, conditions. This is a tick and Lyme, tick-borne diseases and conditions awareness month. Whereas Colorado residents, pets and visitors may have increased exposure to tick habitats through work, play, outdoor recreation pursuits and travel, placing them in closer contact with ticks which are carried by wildlife and domestic animals. And whereas tick bites can transmit serious and potentially fatal diseases and conditions such as Lyme disease, larken down and spotted fever and other tick-borne illnesses resulting in fever, rash and other symptoms which appear like many viral diseases, making diagnosis difficult. And whereas the rate of Lyme disease and other tick-borne infections is continuing to spread rapidly across the United States where the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention estimated annual case number of four hundred seventy six thousand for Lyme disease alone in the U S. And whereas according to the CDC two thousand eighteen study report, tick-borne disease cases more than doubled in the United States in thirteen years from two thousand four to two thousand sixteen. And where seventy seven percent of all vector-borne disease reports. And whereas according to the CDC, untreated Lyme disease during pregnancy can lead to infection of the placenta spread from mother to fetus is possible. And whereas according to the CDC, Lyme disease infections may result in patients experiencing prolonged symptoms, including fatigue, difficulty thinking and memory problems. And whereas the CDC now lists Lyme bacteria as a disease agent that has been linked to chronic symptoms for which the type, duration and intensity of chronic symptoms following an infection can be different from person to person. Symptoms may come and go or vary in severity. And whereas Colorado reported eight human cases of Lyme disease in two thousand nineteen, the largest annually reported case number in Colorado history. And case investigations have been on hold due to limited capacity during the COVID pandemic. And whereas the rate of Lyme and other tick disease, tick-borne diseases in Colorado are likely under recorded due to limited education and prevention awareness, limited surveillance activities and the difficulty of diagnosis. And whereas when Lyme and other tick-borne diseases are not quickly and accurately diagnosed or treated, may result in severe illness, chronic disabling symptoms or death and may men, may mimic other diseases, including acute and long haul COVID nineteen, making diagnosis more difficult. And whereas the best protection against Lyme and other tick-borne diseases and conditions is awareness, prevention, education, prompt, accurate diagnosis and early adequate treatment. Therefore, I Libby Fay, Mayor of Beano Vista, do hereby proclaim forever after May two thousand twenty five as Lyme and other tick-borne diseases and conditions awareness month. We took out a lot of this. But thank you. Um, so trustees, you have before you an agenda for tonight's meeting. Does anybody have any changes, modifications they'd like to see on the agenda? If there are none, I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved. Second.
So we have hike and Swisher, all in favor.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay, the motion is, the agenda is adopted. And then we have the consent agenda, which has minutes of certain commissions and advisory boards and reports from different, um, departments of the town. It also has the appointment of Steve Allender as an alternate member of the Trails Advisory Board. And it has, um, the renewal of marijuana licenses for, um, ascent, uh, ascend to LLC. This is the one on Main Street, which is, uh, This is the one on Main Street, which is retail, recreational, as well as medical marijuana. And then there's a the agreement that we made with regard to the boulders to allow them to go ahead and get certificates of occupancy without having to complete the entire project first. So are there any changes, any items that anyone wants to pull out of the consent agenda for a further discussion as business items, or do you have any questions?
I noticed an error in the minutes on page twenty-nine, which is number six, the move to approve resolution number twenty-eight, approving the payment of cash and lieu, a parting for the six oh two Cedar Street condominium product. Project is said it was carried when it indeed was not carried. So what is that supposed to say?
Page twenty-nine.
Hat-nayed or something, but you know, it's not.
Motion failed.
Failed, you know.
Get that guy some M. and Ms.
Yeah, good catch, then.
Sometimes I read all the minutes very carefully.
That one matters.
I was like, wait a second.
So that's on page twenty-nine?
Yeah. Anyone have anything else? A motion to approve as amended.
A second back.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? See the motion passes, thank you, David. Very careful reading. Now we get to the part of our meeting for public comment, and I assume that some of you may be here for a public comment. And later in our meeting, we will have a public hearing with regard to hotel and liquor license for Ada Potato L. L. C. And then there's one for Dragon Sushi. Those are the only public hearings that we have. So we will have some speakers that we've invited for the discussion about the electric preferred. Other than that, you won't be given an opportunity to speak unless you speak now. So if you'd like to say anything in public comment, you may sign this list on the clipboard, and otherwise there won't be any participation from the public later. Okay, everybody good with that? Okay, so our first public comment speaker is Randy Crane.
Thank you. My name is Randy Crane. I have a residence at four twenty-three Person Avenue and a commercial structure at six fifty-five Greg Drive. My family owns and operates Comfort Gas, which is a fourth-generation business operating in Buena Vista since nineteen forty-eight. My concern today is what's the proposal to move the building codes to the electric preferred model? I want to say I love my electricity, couldn't live without it. I've got good friends and family that work and help run Sangre de Cristo, but it's not the only energy source. And fossil fuels are here, they've helped make our society what it is, and it's going to be needed for another many, many generations. But I have more questions than I do answers. Why does our town government want to do this? Won't this add more to the construction cost of our homes and inflate our monthly expenses? Why do you want to make it difficult to utilize the most affordable type of energy in our homes, which is gas? But you want to enact a code that forces us to utilize the most expensive energy source, which is electricity? And the ironic thing is, more and more of that electricity is created by burning gas. In life, we are taught that diversity creates stability and strength. Adopting these codes is another step in removing the diversity in our energy options, and it's making our society reliant on just one source of energy. Earlier this month, the White House issued a new executive order entitled Protecting American Energy from State Overreach. The order instructs the U. S. Attorney General to identify state and local laws, regulations, and policies that burden the production and the use of domestic energy resources such as gas. They are unconstitutional, they're preempted by federal law, or they are otherwise unenforceable. I feel that this proposal to move towards the electric preferred building code is an example of governmental overreach, and that these rules move towards eliminating the right of citizens to use the energy of their choice. Using gas as the energy of choice gives the residents a safe, clean, and more affordable energy source. At worst, this decision is governmental overreach. At best, this decision is very premature. Maybe fifty years from now, this might make more sense. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming out. I thought I was going to be here at like midnight thirty.
Thank you for the length of your remarks. I want, I forgot to say that you have three minutes, but.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, now we have Pat McCarty.
Yep, so.
Please give your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. My name is Patrick McCarty. I live at four two five Yale Ave, and I'm Randy Crane's son-in-law, carrying on the tradition of the family business. And, you know, I want to thank you all for your time and apologize that my first time for you is to air a grievance. I've had to step down from a lot of my public service roles, a board member of Chape County Search and Rescue and a member of Chape County Fire Protection District, but I've recently had two boys, and they have kind of taken a lot more of my time and energy and focus. I just came from a spring program, a D. P. C. A., and my goal here with the public meeting or public comment section is to let you all know that I have some concerns about where this is going. I'm also a member of the E. D. C., and such a big focus of our time at the E. D. C. is focused on housing. And I just feel that a lot of these energy codes could add to those costs and just kind of want to gain a better understanding of what is happening. There seems to be some ambiguity between electric-ready and electric-preferred, and what's been passed at the State House, and what is happening in local municipalities. And also make myself available to any of you that, if any of you have questions about what our concerns are, or why we feel that propane is a great alternative energy source and a transition fuel for the future, I would love to make myself available to anyone that has any questions about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Israel Haramio.
No comment. That was actually a mistake.
Okay. Carl Linky.
Just kind of, okay. My name's Carla Linky, two two seven on Columbia Ranch Road. I have five other properties in the town of Buena Vista. I kind of heard this coming out, and I'm kind of shooting off the hip here, but I can see what's going on, and it's a lot about control. And if people don't have options, they could freeze. The power goes out. We had a few, quite a few blackouts not too long ago, and they were weird blackouts blamed on Excel. What happens if these get worse, and they're already overloaded? So I see this as just a ploy for control and for more money. Making people put in charging stations for electric vehicles. Some people don't like electric vehicles at all, and I think it's related to the fifteen-minute cities and also the smart cities, which Salida and Buena Vista have signed up through for the state. And it's all about control and money and limiting the freedom of what people can do on their property, in their properties, and in their area, period. If you really look into what those mean, the fifteen-minute cities and these smart cities, it's not about being able to get to the grocery store in fifteen minutes. It goes into a lot more depth than that, and you're not going to get away with it. It's can't keep going like this. Fossil fuels, no, it's renewable. It's renewable energy, and people need it, especially in that line. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Greg Perry. Please give your name and address for the record.
I'm Greg Perry, two seven four three six County Road three seventy-one. So I'm a builder in the area, and I think that, you know, the electric preferred is probably unnecessary and possibly unwise. You know, the county already adopted pretty significant overhaul to the energy codes, so I think everybody can rest easy that we are already building very, very efficient houses. And so I think that, you know, as far as an environmental concern goes, we've taken great steps and at great expense to anybody who's doing a construction project in the county, it has raised costs considerably. And like Carly said, with the, you know, not part of the electric preferred, but what's already been adopted, you know, is making people put the E. D. charging ready in their house. That's a minimum of eight hundred dollars that if you have an electric car or not, you're spending. So I don't think there's any question that adopting more codes will increase costs. I think it's also kind of unwise if you, you know, just like people said, if there's blackouts, you live in a cold environment, and if people's houses freeze, pipes freeze, you have to rip out, gut everything out. How much did you really save if you're an environmentalist, if even one house has to get completely gutted because you saved a bit of energy? Or got it from, you know, what you think is a cleaner source, which here in Colorado, we have ample natural gas, which is a pretty clean-buried energy. So I think giving people the option, you know, they'll make their own choices. If electric rates really are that much cheaper and it really is beneficial, people will be practicing the electric-ready on their own. And I think giving them the option to have gas service in their house if they want it is a good idea, and it's just a redundancy that as a home builder, I wouldn't want to leave somebody with a house that's not going to protect them, you know, and provide that shelter that everybody needs. So I think it's just a smart idea to have some backups and to give choices, just good for the consumer. And yeah, the market does a pretty good job of getting everybody up to speed on what really is working. So if electric rates truly do come down, they're not very cheap right now in Sangre de Cristo, they're probably some of the most expensive in the state, I think. So maybe for this town, wait till they actually do come down, and then people will make their own decision. So I think just leaving it up to the people, everybody's the best steward of their own resources unquestionably, so. Much of that to say.
Thank you. Matt Nikiel. You want to speak now, or are you one of those speakers later? Yeah, you're now.
I'm just now.
Okay. All right.
Start a timer to keep track, but thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak again. My name's Matt Nikiel. I live in Salida, but I'm presenting here because when it comes to the building code, building code, we're all in it together because the county adopts the building code that applies across all three municipalities. And so I just think it's important that we consider everyone's opinion here. And I just wanted to first say thank you for the town in taking so much interest in this, and I think this is a really good thing to suss out this proposal. And I would encourage the town of Buena Vista to schedule any sort of consideration or resolution and support what you preferred for a follow-up meeting, the next meeting, so that the whole community has an opportunity to fully respond to the presentation that we'll hear later tonight. But just a couple of brief points on that. One of the reasons that electric preferred was a proposal that has been mulling around the community for quite a while now is that it's a relatively modest proposal in that it does preserve choice. It doesn't prohibit gas. It gives developers the opportunity to develop homes with gas and electric, or all-electric, or some kind of combination. But what the amendments to the building code would do is further incentivize developers to build homes more efficiently, whether you're building with gas and electricity, or to build homes more efficiently using all-electric. So again, it does preserve choice, and we thought that that was a really good way to thread the needle for our community. The other reason why it's so important is that, as you already know, the county adopted what is required already by the state of Colorado, which is electric-ready. Those were just the first round of a series of building code updates that will be required going forward into the future. And so what electric preferred would do is get our community prepared for new state law requirements that will be required for our community to consider as soon as two thousand twenty-six. The other thing about trying to it's important to build homes right from the start because it's way more expensive to retrofit after the fact, which is why it's so important that, you know, we do see electricity becoming cleaner and more affordable over time. But if you build with gas now, it becomes increasingly more expensive for folks to retrofit. Last couple of points I'll make quickly is one, just to find that Atmos is a for-profit company. Their goal is to sell more gas. A lot of the presentation that you'll hear tonight cites to Resources, including G. T. I., which stands for Gas Technology Institute. That again is an organization that's general thrust is to support the gas industry and some of that. So just, you know, keep that in mind as you're listening, and I hope that there's an additional opportunity for the community to respond to the presentation at a subsequent meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. So that concludes our public comment.
We do have one online.
Okay.
Lisa Martin.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi.
Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Lisa Martin. I live at one two three five zero County Road one ninety-five. I am here representing Chape County Public Health and the We Are Chape Storytelling Initiative, and it's an informative three minutes. We just wanted to give you all a heads up that we have received a two-year grant from Denver Foundation from a project called Belonging Colorado. And it's an effort to have different organizations within the state utilize a method that is, that brings people together and bridges divides. And so Chape County is going to work with intergenerational individuals, so that's our divide, is the generational differences. And we use a technique that was developed by University of California Berkeley Greater Good Science Center. And so we'll meet with these, this group of individuals for several sessions, and the work will culminate in public art. So that's where you guys come in. We are looking, we're hopeful that we can have small public art displays in Buena Vista, in Salida, and Pontchar Springs. So we think we could have up to seven, and they would be like likely small murals on buildings. They may be something else, quilts or something, but we want it really publicly visible, and we have the funding to do all of the work. We are also recruiting artists right now, and we're paying them a good fee. We're going to have one artist, we hope, from the north part of the county, and one artist from the south part of the county, and we want fourteen participants. So we are recruiting heavily now, and it closes May twenty-third. So if you know of anybody, let us know. The thing I really want to talk to you about is the public space. I met with Marika Kopp, who is wonderful, and she connected me with the Historic Preservation Commission, so I will be talking to them soon, and some other folks. But she also gave me the Town of Buena Vista Public Visual Art Policies and Procedures. So I do have a copy of that, so I kind of know what I need to do to help you all in this process and make it go smoothly. So information's on our website. It's We Are Chape. It's wearechapey.org backslash future. It has all the job descriptions. It has links to apply for the participant and job descriptions. And just more information. So if you have any questions, my email is on there and you can just email me directly. I also have, you know, little handouts if you're, you're interested in that. So that's it. We're just trying to make our little community here a better place and bring people together.
Great. Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks.
That's it for public comment. Okay. So the first thing that we have on our business items is a public hearing with, with regard to Ada Potato LLC. Excuse me if I'm saying that wrong, but I'd like to open the public hearing. And first we would hear from, from our staff.
Mayor trustees, a quick overview. On February eleventh, Carly Ramsdale applied for a hotel and restaurant liquor license for Ada Restaurant located at four twenty West Main. The owners are remodeling the structure and opening date has not been determined. The appropriate fees have been paid. The application's set for public hearing before the board for this evening. And the proper notices have been taken by County Times and on the site. A background check was submitted for Carly Ramsdale and satisfactory results were received from the Colorado Bureau of Investigation and the Federal Bureau of Investigation. Due to the ownership percentages, Robert Ramsdale is not required to complete a background check. Proof of possession of the premise has been provided. A needs and desires petition of a neighborhood was, excuse me, circulated and included in the application. As you all know, the neighborhood is a one-mile radius of the proposed direction of the proposed premise. The petition, there was three signatures that did not reside within that premise. That's why in your package you have the second petition to meet the requirements. Police Chief Dean Morgan, Planning Director Marika Kop, Code Force Michael Bryan, Chapey County Fire Protection District Chief Kira Jones have completed and approved the approval form from their departments. Chapey County Consumer Protection Specialist Stephanie Nelson commented that the facility will still require a retail food establishment license before she gives her final approval. The board is being asked to consider a motion to conditionally approve or approve with amendments or deny the application for a hotel restaurant liquor license for Ada Potato LLC Doing Business Ada Restaurant located at four twenty West Main Street. And the condition of the approval, if the board does receive approving upon a condition is pending receipt of a certificate of occupancy from the Town of Buena Vista Planning and Zoning Department and the Chapey County Building Department and acquiring a retail food establishment license.
I'd like to invite Ebo from the restaurant to address the board.
Hi, thank you. I'm Susan Ramsdale. I own the building.
And I'm Carly Ramsdale.
She owns the business.
Yes. So yeah, again, thank you for having us. We are looking to open Ada Restaurant at four twenty West Main. Looking to have it be a reservation only kind of elevated dining experience without the stuffiness. Everyone will be welcome. We, the bar, for our liquor license, the bar will be to serve diners primarily with wine, beer, spirits with their meals. There will be a few seats at the bar, but this is not a destination bar where people come to hang out all night and drink all night since it isn't a residential area. There is not much seating, again, for bar patrons and in the restaurant as a whole, about fifty, I think. Forty, forty to fifty seats, depending on how many tables will be set up. All employees will, that will be serving alcohol will go through the training through the Safe Serve or TIPS alcohol program. We have currently employed consultants to implement a bar program and train all the employees. So everyone is on the same page to instruct safe practices in the restaurant. There will also be a program to keep accurate records of all alcohol sales. There, since it is again, a residential neighborhood and bar restaurant, the music in the restaurant will be very low key and quiet because it is a small space anyway. The building does not allow for a lot of loud noise if everyone wants to enjoy their meal, you know? So that should not be an issue for the residential area. There will be no alcohol in the yard, only on the building and the few tables provided on the deck. There will be some seating for people to eat on the deck. Alcohol will be stored in the bar and in the basement that we have. And there will be a small wine service station in the dining room that will hold wine for dining service only to make it easy for the serving staff. And then cooking wine in the kitchen, of course. So yeah, that's kind of our main points for our restaurant. If anyone has any questions.
Do you anticipate any lighting issues that the neighbors might object to?
I don't believe so. Our sign out front, which will be on Main Street, the Main Street side is, I don't.
It's downlit.
It's downlit on the word Ada, which, so that should not be an issue, just, you know, and no bright or neon colors of any kind lighting. And inside, we want the mood to be kind of more like each table will have like the, it'll be kind of lower dim lighting during dinner service with each table kind of having their own kind of, we don't know, candlelight yet or some type of thing that makes it more intimate. So. I don't anticipate any lighting issues for neighbors.
Trustees, do you have questions for the staff or for the proprietors?
Are you going to have amplified noise outside with the porch area, like music or anything? Just thinking of the neighbors.
Yeah, there's no setup for music outside. If people were to be dining outside, there's no like speaker or anything outside set up right now. I don't really, that's not something we discussed or that I would anticipate us doing. I feel like the noise would all be kept inside. Yeah.
This is kind of our one opportunity to ask you questions and, and tell you what, what we want or might object to. And we'll take your word for, you know, for, for the idea of it being quiet and not, you know, not bright and everything.
Yeah.
But any, any other questions from trustees?
I just wanted to follow up on the parking comments made by Chief Morgan. And kind of hear a little bit more about what the plan is for parking. Yeah, sure. So.
Yeah, sure. We've gone with whatever was required, which is four parking places and an ADA place, as well as, I think we have some bike racks that are figured into the thing. Pleasant is a on-the-street parking street. And so not only do we have the, the required spots that we have to have by the volume of, I guess it's square footage. We also along the, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but along Pleasant, there's a kind of a ugly rock fence. And there's plenty of room for more diagonal parking there as well as up and down the street. I know people were a little bit concerned about the bicycle path. That's on Main. You can't park in a bicycle path anyway. And so we can't really control what people choose to do if they do the wrong thing. But yeah, we think, we think most people should park on Pleasant.
And are you, is your staff kind of prepared to explain to visitors that they can't park on Main? If maybe they did, like, is that something that you all have discussed as a business as well? Just to help keep that bike lane safe?
I would think that probably the more efficient thing would be to put some kind of signage. Because again, we're not going to have a huge staff, so I don't think people would be even looking out there. So I think we'd probably do some kind of signage.
And we also, sorry, kind of hope that by doing the reservation only, which is something we're doing that we want to do anyway, but by kind of going that route, it will kind of help space out the parking issues hopefully a little, you know, so.
Maggie, that, that road is going to have parking inside of the bike lane. There's about fourteen feet between the bike lane and the property.
Oh, on Main?
Yeah.
So there is parking on Main in front of the property.
There's, I mean, it's grass now or grown or something, but there is space for that park.
Okay.
But that would be public street parking, not designated for them.
Correct.
Correct. So maybe not sign as soon as it can be, that is.
Danny, I could park out there. So kind of to tag on our, tag on our earlier discussion of parking. So with forty to fifty seats, when you're totally full, you know, you may have twenty parties or so, twenty-five parties.
Yeah.
And so maybe twenty-five parties, five people walk, so you got twenty cars to park. And then the staff. So you're looking at probably a parking load of twenty to twenty-five cars when things are really going. Is there space for all that?
On the street?
Yeah. And so Andrew, to comment on that, they're meeting the existing parking requirement. So it's a good question. And I think it's a broader conversation, but as far as their site plan, they did meet the required parking.
For sure. Yeah, I'm saying it's, it's not your guys. It's a larger issue we're discussing. So then that parking probably bleeds into some residential areas that you can anticipate someday. Somebody probably finding that a little bit inconvenient.
I, yeah, I think so too, but it is.
Oh, for sure. Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is more just for thinking about this issue in the big picture. So that's not, not particularly your problem. I just want to point that out that it's something that used to go in our parking hopper.
And I think most of that area, people have larger properties and off-street parking.
Yeah, that's, that's not a negative comment about this proposal. It's just the opportunity to bring up another.
The parking issue.
Yeah.
Other questions? Is there parking actually on your property too?
Yes. That's required spaces.
And Marika, you've been through this, no doubt.
Yeah, we worked closely.
Cindy, got anything?
This isn't about parking. It's about their liquor license. And it looks like all the right departments have willingly approved them to have a liquor license and they've gone through all the steps to get it. So I have no questions.
Yeah, I think you're one of the first people who have actually volunteered that they have put all their staff through the TIPS training. Mostly we have to ask or I ask.
Well, and we, I will clarify that we don't have staff yet. It's going to be a while.
That will be a requirement. Yes.
Yeah.
What do you anticipate opening this year?
We hope for maybe late fall. That's kind of like the goal, but yeah.
A while.
Anybody else? Questions?
I'll just generally share too, that with the comprehensive plan update that we're doing, we are looking at West Main. Just generally, we recognize that parking along West Main is, is a consideration, kind of big picture. So that was part of what we talked about. I talked about with Susan's. And yeah, having conversations with the chief on, on parking as well. I, I recognize and appreciate his comments, but I also recognize and appreciate Susan's reading the code. And so I think it's just a bigger discussion, but just so the board is aware, we are kind of looking at a master plan for, for West Main to help tackle some of these ongoing considerations.
Right now, there isn't a lot of businesses on West Main, but I think it's going to be, there's going to be more.
I'd like to open the, the hearing for public comment. So if there are people in the audience or on Zoom who would like to testify on your behalf or ask questions, I'd like to welcome you to do that at this point. Is there anybody who'd like to speak? Okay, and no one's on Zoom. Okay, then I'll close the public comment. And I'd like to then ask the board to ask any further questions that they might have. And if there are none, then I'll close the public hearing. And the board now, someone could make a motion. Or you can ask more questions, make statements.
I'd like to move the conditional approval. Oh, sorry.
I'll second his motion.
Okay. All right. So we have Sturm and Russnor with a motion to approve the liquor license.
Conditionally.
Conditionally. And the conditions are?
Based on the occupancy.
Yeah. I identified it by Paula.
The kitchen occupancy.
Retail food establishment.
Certificate of occupancy from the Town of Buena Vista Planning and Zoning Department and the Chapey County Building Department in acquiring a retail food establishment license.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Does anyone oppose? Good. You're good.
Very much. Look forward to seeing everybody there.
Aaron's in my house. Okay, the next item is again a public hearing. So I will open the public hearing. And Paula, would you like to address this?
Okay, on this liquor license, this is for Dragon Sushi LLC Doing Business Dragon Sushi Bar. On May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, the trustees approved the hotel liquor license for Dragon Sushi owner Sarah Hernandez. On April tenth, twenty twenty five, Ms. Hernandez submitted a permit application and reported change form for a change of location permit. If approved, the permit allows a location tied to the hotel restaurant liquor license to change from three twenty eight Charles Street to seventy ten Highway twenty-four North. Ms. Hernandez is also submitting a change to the trade name from Doing Businesses Dragon Sushi Bar to Latinos Restaurant and Dragon Sushi Bar. The Board of Trustees have no authority to grant or deny the change in trade name. The application was set for public court hearing before the Board of Trustees on May thirteenth, twenty twenty five and noticed in the Chapey County Times and posted on the property. The application has been deemed incomplete as of the deadline for packet material to be complied. And the staff is requesting the trustees consider a motion to continue the public hearing to June tenth, twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Paula. Is there anyone from the restaurant who wants to speak?
They're not in attendance tonight.
Okay. All right. And is there anyone in the public who wants to speak? Okay. Then I'd like to close the public hearing. And is there a motion from the board?
I move we continue the public hearing to June tenth.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have Rice and Hike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes and the hearing is put off until June tenth. Okay, next we have Greg Feld to us from the Upper Arkansas Water Conservation District. And Goodwin, you have a presentation here, right? Here we go. All right.
Yeah, thank you. Many of you probably recall, not that long ago, I was county commissioner for eight years. And as I was term limited, I kind of wanted to continue public service in some fashion. It's just such a great experience working with the community. And Terry Skanga, our manager of twenty-five years, was ready to retire. And so here I am, the new general manager of Upper Arkansas Conservation District. Terry has done a fantastic job filling that organization over the years. And it is a, it's a daunting job to step into his shoes, quite frankly, because he really built it one step at a time. And I had to embrace the whole, the whole thing all at once. Fortunately, I've got great staff. Gracey Goodwin's our project manager. George Gertson, many of you probably know, is our hydrologist. Denise Sanchez, our office manager, and Jennifer Skanga. It's got a front desk. is kind of front desk and does a lot of accounting as well. And we've got a team of attorneys and engineers like you do to consult and help with what we have going on. So talking with Brian recently, he, he said, hey, could you, well, we were gonna get that other agenda item teed up, the MOU. And he said, maybe you could come and just do a little presentation and works great. One of the things we've been trying to do, Gracie and I, we put together sort of a roadshow and we're, we're trying to get out to our constituent communities and just share with them who we are, remind them, help them understand. And I think also make sure people understand that we really are here to serve our communities, Chaffee, Fremont, Custer Counties. And each, each constituent community is different. They have different needs. And so we've tailored this discussion tonight to Buena Vista, but we'll be hitting a lot of the communities over the next year or so. So we can go to the next slide and Gracie's gonna talk a bit about kind of the water law background and what we do.
So hello, I'm Gracie Goodwin. I'm, like I said, project manager and I also do a lot of the water accounting with George. And so kind of wanted to introduce ourselves and what we do. But to be able to talk about our business and our district, first, anything with water, you gotta go back in history a little bit to have a little bit of base understanding. So as you can see on the map, there's actually two types of water law. The eastern U.S., you, for all waters. And they're all under the riparian doctrine. And on the western side of the U.S. is kind of where there's a lot of scarcity, as you can see. And we are under the prior appropriation doctrine. Can I hit the next slide?
Question, what's the data compared to the solid weather two?
I actually.
Don't mean to put you off.
One's a hundred meridian and one's eleven.
Oh, I got that.
That's just kind of where they, they determine the line, I guess. I, I have no idea. Hold that with Terry, I'm not gonna.
It's the point, it's really the point where you have to go to irrigate and I.
Which one, hundred or ninety-eight?
I would say the ninety-eight.
It's been, I think it's been moving towards the east. So that's why they don't go there.
So if we first kind of look at more the eastern side, so where there's a lot of water. Say you have a ditch running through your property. As long as that ditch is kind of on your land, you are entitled to the natural flow. You can irrigate with it as long as you don't, it stays undiminished in quality and quantity. And all the landowners on that ditch actually will share that flow. You don't have to use it. You don't have to put it to any use. You can just watch the water go by or you can do things for your, your fish and your lawn, which is very different than where we are over here in the east or in the west. So it's very dry. And as some of you know, some of the better, like the lands might not necessarily be right where the river is. So we're under the prior appropriation doctrine where you had to actually appropriate and get the water from the river to where you wanted to irrigate. And that's where kind of like first in time, first in right comes into play is whoever first started using that water and appropriating that water gets the priority to use it. And you actually have to use the water and put it to beneficial use. Otherwise, you won't be able to keep it. So over in the east where you have that ditch running through your backyard, you're able to irrigate. If you happen to have a ditch running through your backyard here, you better have water rights to it. Otherwise, you don't get to touch it. It's not your water. You can look at it. You can enjoy the scenery of it, but you don't necessarily get access to it. And so one of the big differences is in prior appropriation doctrine, we view water more as a property right. It can be sold, transferred and moved. It doesn't necessarily have to stay with the land. Where in the riparian doctrine, the water doesn't stay with the land. So that just kind of gives a little bit of the base because it's really important, previous to when you're making decisions, a lot of people are moving here from all over the U.S. A lot of people have probably never seen some of our water type of laws and it might be foreign to them. So it's always good to remind people that, okay, just from where you maybe came from, it could be different from here or vice versa. I'm gonna hand it back to Greg.
So yeah, throughout the west and particularly in Colorado, the prior appropriation system is in place to manage for scarcity. There's not enough water to go around. And I can tell you in the Arkansas basin, that's probably as true as anywhere else in Colorado and more true than many of our basins. I, I do serve a couple of capacities in water. I'm the Chaffee County Director for the Southeastern Colorado Water Conservancy District, which manages the Fry Arc Project, which is a trans-mountain diversion, brings water into the basin for both irrigation and minisprings. And then I'm your, I'm the Basin Wide Director on the Colorado Water Conservation Board. So I did work with Chris, who's with the agency there and served on that Board of Directors. When we talk about scarcity in the Arkansas, I think it's safe to say that from a sort of firm yield or dependable water supply perspective, this river was pretty well appropriated by eighteen ninety. After that, water rights are barely in priority. And this is the largest basin in the state, geographically speaking, and about the smallest when it comes to the actual number of acre feet of water that are moving through the drainage. So we have a lot of demand and very limited water supplies. The last time that we were actually in a situation where you didn't have to have a water right to to take some water out of the river was in nineteen ninety-nine, what we call Free River. And there's been about five days like that since the mid-fifties. So it gives you a sense how fully appropriated the Arkansas basin is. In addition to our internal prior appropriation system here in Colorado, the Arkansas River is subject to a interstate compact with Kansas. Kansas came after us about our growing use of water back in the forties and our compact was signed in nineteen forty-nine. The Supreme Court is the court of original jurisdiction for interstate compacts. So we have a dispute with Kansas, we go to the Supreme Court. Our compact was also approved by Congress because it is an interstate agreement like that. So what the compact says is we can't have any sort of new net depletions to the river at the state line after nineteen forty-nine. So you think about what was going on in Colorado then, and he was, his family was starting overcast. And, and we were already in this situation where we basically had a cap on new use. So you can change water rights. You, I know you all are familiar with that because you've done it. But you can't, you, you can't create any new depleted, net depletions, which will tie into our talk about augmentation here. We got a lot of competing demands here. You know, we have Colorado Springs and Buffalo in particular. We also have Aurora that is pulling a significant amount of water out of this basin entirely, taking it up to the South Platte Basin. And you know, about a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand acre feet a year on average is trans-basin water. Coming from the Eagle, the frying pan, the roaring fork, and a few smaller diversions out of the Gunnison and Rio Grande as well. But that's, that's been a really important part of the equation here in the Arkansas basin. So the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District, we were created in nineteen seventy-nine, in part because of this scarcity and the challenges. There were big commercial or irrigation wells that were pumping water for sprinkler systems in the lower basin in nineteen seventy-seven when we had a tremendous drought here. And that pumping was pulling water from the river. It was pumping out of the ground. Nineteen sixty-nine, the legislature determined groundwater and surface water are really one system. When you pull from groundwater, it tends to deplete nearby streams, tributary streams. And so the Arkansas River was going down in the lower basin because of all the well pumping. But because the water rights were senior in the lower basin to our water rights up here, we were getting called out. Our, our irrigators were getting called out and were not allowed to, to divert their water. But what was causing them to be called out was really out of priority pumping and wells. And so some pretty visionary ranchers up here got together and said, we gotta have our own voice and formed the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District. Our mission is to acquire and preserve for present and future uses all water rights that are available in the upper valley and for, for whatever legal uses that may be and to seek every means possible to increase the water supply in the upper valley. We do that through a few different mechanisms. I'm just gonna touch on those. Augmentation is a big one. You guys, I think, have had plenty of discussions about that because your system largely runs off wells. And in order to pump those wells, you found that you have to replace the out of priority depletions that are caused by that. And so there, we've had the conversations about how important it is where you site the well, whether it's tributary to Cottonwood Creek or the Arkansas River, a lot easier to augment on the main stem than on the tributaries. But we've worked with you considerably and there's another agreement tonight to talk about augmentation. We, we augment about four thousand structures. Most of those are wells in our three county area. And so we have quite a complicated system in place of water storage and then releasing water in the time and place of need to ensure that out of priority pumping or evaporation on ponds is covered. We, we run a number of reservoirs, including Cottonwood Lake, which Gracie will talk about. We manage that with you guys through what we call integrated water management. And we'll talk a little more about that here in a minute. We also put a lot of emphasis on advocacy, whether that's with the legislature or through monitoring the water court resumes and making sure that new applications for water rights are proceeding with proper protections for senior water rights, whether that's ours or yours or any of our irrigators in the valley. We're pretty vigilant about that. And we have a lobbyist up at the legislature to help protect us all. The, the map, I don't need to spend much time on. You all know where Chaffee, Fremont and Custer Counties are. But it's, it's about a three, two thousand square mile area, something like that. And about seventy-five thousand people relying on our services in some way. Our Board of Directors is appointed by a panel of judges, district court judges, chief judges here in our eleventh judicial district, also a judge from the San Luis Valley because there's a little bit of Suave County in the district and another judge from El Paso because there's a little bit of El Paso County as well. We have thirteen board members. They're basically, we have two board members representing each school district within our three county area. We have one at large board member who can be from anywhere. They're appointed to four-year terms. There's no term limits on that. They're paid kind of like you. I'll just say, a minimal stipend. And they're all meant to be people with some expertise and background in one. Always wonder how we're funded. Just so you're clear, you know, thanks to Tabor, we're sort of a bifurcated organization. We are a lot of the district. We also have a water activity enterprise. Tabor allows for that. In water, our landfill has sort of a similar arrangement. It allows us to generate and retain time so that we, we have big opportunities or big challenges. We have the funds available to follow up on them. So within the district, we have a property tax. It's a point four or five, point four or five mil levy. It's assessed on property in the three counties. We also have a specific ownership tax. The property tax probably generates about, I'm gonna say six hundred and fifty thousand a year. And the, the vehicle tax is about seventy thousand. We also, for the enterprise, in addition to being able to retain revenue, you know, that's where we house our augmentation plan and kind of the business side of the whole operation. And so that's where a lot of the revenue comes in, both selling augmentation certificates and then annual storage and maintenance fees, water leases, different sort of business arrangements that, that we have that generates the lion's share of our money. We also get quite a few grants from the state, from CWCB and also federal, federal funds. I'm gonna hand it back to Gracie for some more talk about augmentation and our slide in here.
Great. So I just kinda wanna go over some of our storage and our supply and demand. So we have about sixty-five hundred acre feet currently in storage. Our district policy is to hold at least two to three times our annual demand. Right now, I think we have a little bit more than that. We definitely want to keep a diverse portfolio, a mix of different water rights, native, some imported, one up through the Fry Arc Project. We do have a pretty substantial renewable amount of water rights that count as our renewable water supply, a little over two thousand that come back every year, that number, depending if it's a dry year or what year kind of changes and fluxes. So that's more of an average. And then our actual total demand in, this is pretty much made up of what is our augmentation requirement for all of our certs and any leases. We do have some annual leases, some long-term leases. And so a few different things go into that, which is about seventeen hundred acre feet, which pretty much we augment about thirty-five hundred homes. And if you're more or less in the county, there's a good chance, and you have a well, there's a pretty good chance that we augment it. Next slide. And, and so a lot of people hear the word augmentation, don't really know what that means. It might be a little counterintuitive than what often is referred to as. But before nineteen sixty-nine, surface water and groundwater were viewed as like kind of separate. And during the Adjudication Administration Act of nineteen sixty-nine, they actually recognized that connection to tributary surface water actually. Same with if you're having a ton of wells, that could affect some of that water getting to, back to the river and going down like you mentioned to Kansas. And so that's where augmentation comes in. The best, easiest pretty much example, as we've kind of talked about a little bit, is wells. A lot of you probably have wells on your property. Instead of going and trying to get a new water right, which there's not any water really left, aren't even taken or pretty much adjudicated right now. But instead of, if you say you were gonna get a new water right, you would have to go to water court, pay quite a bit of money and a lot of time. Upper, we've already done all that. We have our augmentation, our umbrella augmentation plans so that you can kind of enroll in our plan. We have about nine reservoirs that we own, operate or store water in. And then we take all of the depletions from your house. So we know that when you pump stuff out of wells, some of that water is gonna go back through your sewer, through your septic. But there's a little bit that's used. So that depletion consumed use is what we actually make releases back from our reservoirs back into the system. Whether it's on wells like Cottonwood or on the tributaries or directly to the main stem. So that the senior water rights downstream aren't injured and they're putting more calls on. So we gotta keep the system whole. And we gotta make sure that we replace the impact of the stream by time, amount and location. So when might you need augmentation? Pretty much if you're drilling a new well on less than thirty-five acres. If it's more than thirty-five acres, there's different exemptions by the state. If it's less than thirty-five acres, you're gonna need some form of augmentation. Reservoirs, ponds, that open surface area causes evaporation and that evaporation actually has to be taken into account and be replaced. Even if you're having an existing well and you're changing it for different uses, say you're going from domestic to a commercial use or going to add a greenhouse, you have to actually take that into consideration and add some more augmentation. Even if you're just creating a wetland or different, you're spreading water out, it's gonna have more surface area, more evaporation. So this isn't a complete list, but this is just some of the more common times when you might need augmentation. Then I'm gonna just read this kind of real quick. Like when you purchase augmentation, especially, we're talking about through Upper. You're purchasing, it's a contractor agreement that provides replacement water according to a court decreed augmentation plan based upon a specific amount of depletion or specified beneficial uses. It is not a water right, nor does it provide water to your structure or well. That is definitely, we get a lot of calls, a lot of questions. People don't quite understand that. And that augmentation certificate stays with the property and is not transferred because it is not a water right. And I'm gonna pass it back to Greg for a minute to talk about integrated water management.
So integrated water management, it's it's, I think, a thing that time has come and as. And as we see more growth in the Upper Arkansas Basin and we have more and more entities needing water and historically competing for water. You really start to think about how can we do this in a more integrated way across jurisdictional boundaries and different types of needs, working together to both make the best use of available storage, exchange potential on the creeks and rivers. I'm sure you've heard about that on Cottonwood Creek. Mostly get water into Cottonwood Lake by exchange. So that's a, and that's a pretty limited resource, so to speak, that capacity. We worked, I think in many ways, Pontchar Springs was kind of our pilot project. That was where Upper Ark really first, I think, integrated our operations with another municipality and found that we had tremendous kind of cost savings and economy of scale by working together that way. In Pontchar's case, we also ended up taking over their water accounting for them because especially being such a small municipality, we would have had to hire someone to do that and we could roll it into what we were already doing. So this idea of working together in the Upper Basin is something that we really welcome. We think that we can fetch the resource considerably, make optimal use of the various elements that go into doing that. And it really just takes, moving away from sort of a competitive cards close to your vest mindset and having more open communication among the different water management entities in the basin to try to find ways to get more value, more beneficial use out of every drop of water. And so that previous slide lists a bunch of different sort of those benefits. But you know, I think you've all discussed them frankly here in your own meetings. And we've been able to implement some of those elements with Buna Vista. Here in the Upper Basin, you know, we are, we're working with Pontchar Springs, as I said. We provide storage to Salida, up at North Fork Reservoir in particular. We augment soccer fields in Salida and the farm to table greenhouse program. There's our Cottonwood Creek where, you know, we're working very closely with the town of Buna Vista to help you all achieve your public irrigation goals. We're, we've got the water supply agreement with you. We're working to provide, we already have an agreement in place to provide augmentation for you sort of in a bulk plan. And really this idea that has led to the MOU tonight, I think this talks about, you know, you are the ones who need to figure out what you want your town to look like and how you want to manage your water system and determine how much the ratio of pumping to depletions, that's challenging for us to do because we're not operating your system. And yet we then would look to you for what your need actually is. And then we're going to make sure that the augmentation takes place in that time, location and amount that keeps the river whole, keeps you out of trouble. And we all do that in the most efficient way possible. So everyone's kind of doing what we're best at. I'm going to skip over what we do in Fremont and Custer, but just say that we really value that opportunity. And I've really seen in my 25 years or so of working pretty hard on the water, seen here throughout the Arkansas Basin, just an amazing increase in the amount of communication. You know, our flow program that provides the river recreation in the summer and fishery flows in the spring. Earl Richmond attends those weekly meetings that we have. It's amazing to me to see Colorado Springs, Pueblo, Southeastern, Aurora, Upper Ark. Everybody basically laying their cards on the table and saying, this is what we're doing, this is what we need to do. How can we work together to do these things, but also achieve these non-consumptive beneficial uses like making sure we have the best river season possible, making sure our general fisheries is healthy as possible. And it's that same mindset, I think. We want to make sure that Buna Vista is as healthy as possible, makes the most of its water resources. And then we provide our sort of specialized knowledge, engineering and sort of systems approach to all this to make it as affordable and effective produced possible. And I'll turn it back to Gracie to kind of wrap up with some.
Yeah. And then we're probably getting close on time, so I'll try to get through these kind of quick. So just from project aspect, if you look at, we've had a lot of things going on on Cottonwood in general, just on even that one tributary. We have three reservoirs, Rainbow Cottonwood and Ice Lake. There's a lot of BD agreements for augmentation. And I know we're going to have another one tonight. We have Cottonwood inner ditch exchange, which is kind of an exchange to help keep some water in Cottonwood, exchanging with Trout Creek Ditch and some Lubyel storage. So just more or less, there's a lot of things going on on Cottonwood. I actually came here quite a few months ago and did a whole presentation just on the Cottonwood Lake and Cottonwood Lake Dam and spillout or spillway project. So I'm not going to go too much into detail. The dam's got some issues deteriorating. We're going to go in and put in a new structure and spillway. That's going to make it a safer dam, more efficient operations. And right now, we can't access the lower part of the reservoir. So we're going to gain about 63 additional acre feet of space that's already in the reservoir, but it, we don't have access to. So it's going to make it more accessible. And right now, just for an update, we, our engineer sent over today's, the draft of the final designs. We have a little bit of internal review and then he's going to submit that to dam safety and forest service simultaneously to get their approvals. We are still waiting on our special use permit at the moment. Another exciting project that we've been in the works for years, but we feel like we're getting closer, is the Trout Creek Park Lubyel Storage. Pretty much, you guys know the Trout Creek Park area, all the big pivots. We want to be able to try to use those corners, the unused corners of the pivots to put in infiltration and recharge pits so that we can capture excess supply in the wet years to kind of build a sustainable and reliable base flows for the future. So it's like an underground reservoir. Fill in all those little spaces between the rocks with water. It's cheaper to build than above ground. You don't have to pay evap. Can't quite control like a reservoir or gate. You open it and you have the timing, but it'll continually flow back to the river. Last kind of project is Chayke County groundwater study. So it's partnership between Chayke County, Upper Ark and USGS. And we're looking, it's a continued study from previous years. I think the last one was like 2001 to 2003. Looking at our groundwater sources, quality, locations, availability, and then using that to try to put it into a model that we might be able to throw in some predictions of, okay, possible weather scenarios, what we might think and the county's going to hopefully use that information to not necessarily make plans, but guide some possible decisions about making sure that all the water is available that needs to be for our community. And we just want to have a continuing partnership. So that's kind of the end of it. And open it up if we have any time for any questions.
I can't picture how the Lubyel storage works.
Um, Jenna.
I'm good.
You may not be able to.
Well, so pretty much you have like a pond, but you don't want, you don't want it to actually be sealed. So we want the water to infiltrate into the ground. And there's about seven foot of root zone. So we need the water to actually go down and go down deeper. And so there's all this space between the different rocks and the sand and the gravel that that's where the water infiltrates. And actually kind of we can store water. So water is constantly moving in that area. There's a back way, like underground river. So it mounds up and then over time, as it more or less sinks down, it starts to spread out and that water that we're like injecting kind of back into the ground makes it back to the river. So you can add to that.
So yeah, so Libby, we're talking about from 24 on the east side of the river down to Fisherman's Bridge, that whole plain. We think that between the root zone and the existing groundwater table, there's about 15,000 acre feet of space. So roughly equivalent to Clear Creek Reservoir when it's full and full, not under the storage restriction it's under now. As Gracie said, there's an old foul wag. It's an ancient river channel that underlays that area and where the river used to flow. And so as you put water in there, it will start to make its way. And you can figure out the timing through our engineering and modeling from which pond you put it into, to when it comes out of the substrate, mostly down towards Fisherman's Bridge. And then you can then take credit for that water and you can either exchange it back upstream and put it in, back into the Lubyel storage again. If you don't, if we're having a real dry year, maybe we take possession of that water and we use it for augmentation downstream. So it's not a reservoir in the sense like Gracie said, you can't just go open the gate, but it would provide kind of a backbone of water storage without evaporative loss, without expensive construction and permitting, and have kind of just a steady tap. Once you get the thing full or to a stable level, you have a reliable return flow that you can then build, you know, you can build your engineering around and kind of have a base flow to satisfy needs.
And you can't do this everywhere. That specific area has been identified by a few different studies throughout the state saying that that is a good location for this.
And we looked, just as an example, we looked at the Hill Ranch area. You know, we thought, oh, that could be a really great place to do this. Well, you go down not very far and you hit this clay layer. It's impermeable. And so the water that you would be able to put in moves out pretty quick. You don't have near the capacity like you do here.
And just from a concept wise, it functions similar to a reservoir that you put water in when it's available.
Yes.
So that the question is where does the water come from?
So we would use fully consumable water that Upper Ark owns. We would divert it in through probably the Helena Ditch and put it into these actual infiltration ponds. We'll have measuring on them so we know exactly how much water we're putting in so that we can make sure to measure it all like through the system.
And we would almost certainly have partners, right? I mean, Buna Vista is an obvious partner to look to, but Pueblo Board of Water Works is interested in this and so is Southeastern for putting, potentially storing excess dry and armpit some project.
And with the timing, it's not instantaneous. Like a reservoir is pretty quick. You open the gate and maybe, depending on how far you're trying to get it. This is, I think it takes at least five years before 50% or the bulk kind of gets back to the river. And then it's more of a bell curve. And so the last bit take a long time to get there. So that's why you're kind of doing the studies that you're constantly adding more in. And eventually you'll get to a point where that balances and you'll have a consistent amount hitting the river.
If you think about it too, if you had a really dry year and you didn't have water to put in, so you have maybe a divot in this sort of conveyor, underground conveyor belt. If you have different recharge zones, you can theoretically maybe a year or two later in the wet year, maybe catch that up. And so that, you know, the biggest thing is to keep that return flow at the river as stable as possible. And so this one, yeah, we've been, because a lot of it involves DOC plans, we've struggled with kind of the revolving door of people getting promoted or retiring and keep starting over. But we're getting some good traction again. Really, one of my goals for, you know, what'll hopefully be about my 10 year career or something at Upper Ark is try and get this thing operational.
Well, you need more staff to do the accounting on that? Or can you guys absorb all that with staff that you have now?
You know, if you, Chris, if you take that and we have probably add it to other developments that'll surely be happening too, I would imagine we might need a little more staff. But it's a pretty lean and mean crew, you know? We're just, there's really five of us. Terry Skeng is still working with us part-time as an advisor, at least for this year. But yeah, we get a lot done in that little place. Well, thank you very much for having us. We appreciate it and we'll stick around for the, you know, your discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, good. So now we're, Joel, right?
Yeah.
All right, Joel?
Yeah. Yeah, thanks, Greg and Gracie. Appreciate that. This is a, I guess, a proposal, if you will, something to consider, a non-mining memorandum of understanding with the Upper Ark. You all know that we've, over the last few years in particular, have been talking about potential augmentation certificates. I know that there will be developments that come before the town that are going to ask to accept augmentation certificates as a source of water, either through, because we don't have enough water in town for a particular project or because they're trying to annex the town. We've had, we had conversations with a couple of developers, maybe a year or two ago in particular, where a developer wanted to come into town and started talking to the Upper Ark. And then they started talking to us and then they started back in the Upper Ark. And there were these conversations that were happening and it put all of us in a real awkward position because there were different messages being shared with different people. And we, anyway, we didn't really know how to proceed with working with the Upper Ark or with developers. And so this is an MOU that really just outlines how we communicate with each other should we ever want to consider accepting augmentation certificates. And that's up, put it up to the town, assuming that there's water available through the Upper Ark. But how do we talk to each other? And how does the developer interface with us? So it sets out that the town is really acting as the intermediary. We decide whether or not to, one, do we want a project? Do we want, do we have capacity in our wells in fact to, you know, have augmentation? What kind of percentage in our portfolio? Do we want augmentation certificates? What, there's so many questions still that we have to answer about augmentation certificates. But this, all this does is say, we're going to work together and this is how. It's good progress. It's taken, yeah, I mean, the first iteration came out like at least two years ago. Once we said, hey, you know what? Let's actually do this thing. It's only taken a couple of months. So because it's, it's pretty basic and it's non-bike. Anyway, for your consideration.
And so just, just to reiterate, just because we can accept all certs doesn't mean we will.
Correct.
This is, this is kind of fleshing out the can part of it. If we do it, this is, this is the roadmap for that. Whether we will on a case by case basis, there's lots to go into each individual decision.
Yeah, we've got some things coming before you all, you know, some conversations that we need to have about that. Hopefully for soon.
Joel, I really appreciate the way you presented this to us. I just want to thank you for that. I found it easy to follow and it makes a lot of sense to me.
Thank you.
I don't know if we want to have more discussion on it or not, but when we're ready for a motion, I'd like to make that motion to approve this resolution.
That's how you move a meeting.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
So we have Sterling Rice. Are there any amendments to the resolution that anyone would want to make? Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, good, motion process.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate the cooperative nature that we have and we've been developing the Upper Ark for decades. But it's really great to have, you know, purchased a 50 acre feet recently. This, we've got some other conversations that were happening. So thanks for coming out. Thank the board for supporting our cooperative collaborative work with Upper Ark.
Right, yeah, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you. And I guess, like I said, you know, especially coming from the county background, just having a feel for how it feels to be trying to do what you're trying to do. Uh, it's really important. It's like a renewed emphasis, I guess, that we want to make sure that, um. We're providing everything you need, but we're not driving how you do it. Want to be a resource. So appreciate the, the, the support and thanks for having us. And we got to go get ready for tomorrow. So unless there's any other questions, we'll find that out.
Okay, thanks very much. Appreciate both of you being with us.
Thanks, Juan.
Okay, now we are up to, um, item eight, which is, uh, the electric preferred continued discussion. So we've invited some, um, people to speak with us, including Atmos Energy. Uh, Public Affairs Manager, Kristen Jones, and someone from, um, Sangre de Cristo. Is there someone from Sangre de Cristo here?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And, um. We've got a lot of comments from builders. So, um, most of them, I mean, all of them really were.
Um, it's a mix. So there's a couple, um, comments that were provided, uh, from builders. And then there were just some general receipt of, uh, residents in the community. So it's a mix within the packet, but there are some from the building community and then some from the community.
Okay. So who's can I, on this?
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's not much as far as introduction. That was a good one. So, yeah, Kristen can take it from here.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor and trustees and to the staff too for facilitating, uh, and organizing all of this tonight and every week. Um, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to be back. Um, I provided comments, uh, at a meeting about a month, month and a half ago. And, uh, appreciate the invitation to, uh, uh, share some remarks with you all tonight. In the context really of, uh, the utility industry itself, energy providers, electric, gas, uh, utilities. I myself have a background, uh, in the utility industry that stretches back forty years. Um, I, I started my career with electric co-ops and, uh, then, uh, progressed, uh, through a number of channels. Ended up working at an investor-owned utility for a long time, then moved to another investor utility as well. But working on both of the, uh, electric and the gas side. Electric and gas utilities, uh, do a lot to serve their communities. And I think that, you know, uh, electric co-ops especially and gas utilities and investor-owned utilities have a very deep, uh, have a very deep understanding of their customers' needs. And that's really why we're all here tonight is we strive to improve reliability, uh, for our customers. And that's, that's our number one, reliability and safety. Um, with that in mind, I want to, um, talk a little bit about Atmos Energy. And, uh, then, uh, extend my comments into reliability and affordability and, and customer choice. In, in Colorado, Atmos Energy serves close to a hundred twenty-eight thousand customers. It's right in front of me. I guess I should look there. And, uh, we have a hundred and thirty-seven, uh, employees, seven located here in Chafe County. Some of the people are here to support me tonight and, uh, I appreciate that very much. Um, we have, uh, we last year invested about forty-four million in capital projects in the state. And, uh, we provide a substantial amount in charitable contributions to our, to the communities where we serve. Because we believe, we believe in those communities very deeply. Next slide, please. Natural gas is an affordable, efficient and reliable, uh, solution for Colorado. Uh, it is reliable because it's, um, uh, transported principally underground. Um, all forms of energy, uh, have to be transported in some way. And there are characteristics that go along with that. One of the characteristics of natural gases is transport underground, bless you.
Excuse me.
Uh, that's fine. And it, it makes natural gas a very reliable, um, commodity for the consumer, for a retail customer. Um, in Colorado, uh, we have approximate, we have, uh, we have some statistics up here from, uh. These are from the Bureau of Labor and Statistics primarily. That's the ninety-two thousand five hundred median household income in Colorado. In Chafe County, it's eighty thousand. And if you look back, there's been, uh, uh, year on year from Bureau of Labor and Statistics. You can see the trends as things progress in, uh, incomes for the state. You can see the trends as well in progression of expenditures by household, uh, in the state of Colorado. Um, twenty-three percent of Colorado households qualified for federal assistance in twenty-twenty-four. And, um, in Colorado alone, three point two million dollars, uh, that we are aware of was provided in assistance in dollars to Colorado ratepayers. In one form or another. Uh, we believe, as I mentioned at the outset, that gas and electric service are necessary for Coloradoans. To not just make, keep their, uh, keep their lights on and survive, but to thrive. They need electricity and they need gas. The difference is we've, the, the, the differences that a, that a utility customer. Or customers may have between and among themselves usually stem from their preferences as to how they want to cook, how they want to heat. Um, it could be affordability and that's why I mentioned the affordability statistic up here. A home which uses, uh, both fuels, electric and gas tends to save a substantial amount of money. In climate zone six, I believe the, the figure is really closer to fourteen hundred dollars a year in savings. That twelve hundred dollars a year is really more climate zone five and four. Next slide, please. Um, the, uh, potential impacts of electric preferred codes, um. Really result in the, the look at cost of housing, cost of maintaining a home. Uh, energy bills, for example, uh, could, could impact energy reliability for the rate payer, for the rate paying customer. And carbon emissions are important to consider too. On that last fact, I'll, on that last point, I'll mention consistently in the last few years, it's been proven that. A, a household which uses ele- electricity and gas has a thirty-six percent lower carbon footprint than one that uses electricity alone. Why is that? And it says, one of the comments or one of the folks who presented comments tonight said, we generate using gas for good reason. We generate for using gas and other fossil fuels. And so when you generate with gas at the point of, or at the point of origin versus using gas at the endpoint, you're going to see. You're going to see differences in a car, in carbon footprint creation. That carbon foot, footprint creation is a necessary component of electricity generation at this point in time. And one day that may change, but at this point in time, that's, that's just where we are. Eighty percent of Colorado households then shifting to, um, shifting to, uh, um, economics and affordability. Eighty percent of Colorado households right now, as of, I believe it was February of this year, I'd have to look back to the statistic to see. Eighty percent of Colorado households cannot afford or cannot qualify to purchase. A median price home in Colorado in the state, eighty percent. And that's a pretty, that's, that's a pretty substantial number. Uh, it's bad across the country, as we all know. But in Colorado, it's kind of an acute, it is an acute issue that we're having to deal with. Um, next slide, please. With increased home construction costs comes pricing more folks out of the ability to, uh, to afford a home. Um, as, as it's been in the paper around here locally and in, um, other publications throughout the state. According to the National Home Builders Association, you add about, uh, twenty, twenty, twenty-two to twenty-four thousand dollars. For the construction of a home with the implementation of the twenty-twenty-one IECC. So with, with that, with that having already, and this is the electric ready code that was mentioned earlier in the evening. With electric ready code increasing, uh, the cost of a home that amount, and we're already at that point. Anything on top of that is not going to do anything to lower the price of a home. And so that's just a, a facet we think is important to remember. For every, uh, for every, uh, thousand dollar increase in the price of a home. Seventeen hundred folks are, uh, become in Colorado, become unable to qualify again for a home. So that means that with the implementation of those twenty-twenty-one codes, those electric ready codes. That, and that immediately put forty, forty-one thousand households, uh, made it outreach for them to qualify for a home. Uh, next slide, please. Thanks. The, uh, affordable homes, affordable homes are becoming an increasingly valuable commodity in the states. And that includes having the ability to pay your, your energy bills, uh, gas and electric. As we've, as we've, as we've documented throughout the last few years in Colorado, electric rates have gone up. And this is across the state. Uh, we, we've also seen that natural gas prices and propane have remained more steady. And not increased as much. I don't have propane prices on there. Um, we have, uh, a substantial number of families in the state spending seven to ten percent of their, uh, of their monthly income. Before taxes on electric and gas. And, um, when you break that down, it's approximate, gas is the, the, the lesser of the two. It, it costs the average home, um, anywhere from, uh, it costs the average home about three to four times as much on their electric bill as it does their gas bill each month. So even with that though, the important figure to remember is a substantial number of homes are spending more than ten percent of their income each month. On their energy bills. Thanks. Um, and energy mix and now getting into customer choice and the customer being able to choose. An energy, an energy mix is important. Customers need electricity and they need natural gas or propane. Whatever it is to be able to heat their home, uh, affordably. Cooking and heating when combined, just looking at cooking and heating, according to many surveys, you're, this is one I put up here. But, um, you're looking at, um, eleven hundred, eleven hundred and forty-two dollars by one survey to heat and cook annually with natural gas. Twenty-two, twenty-two hundred to heat and cook combined with electricity. Now, most homes in the region don't do both with one or the other. They do, they use some sort of a combination of electric and gas in their home. But if you were forced to heat and cook with only electricity or forced to heat and cook with only gas. This is what you might see. And the reason I put this up here is just to give us an idea as a group as to the differences in cost per BTU. Um, the cost of homeownership, I'm going to keep on running here because we're getting kind of late. Energy reliability in North America, I'll just, I'll just mention the NERC studies. I would encourage everyone here and in the audience to take a look at North and look at the, look at the NERC studies that are published every December. You go back to the last few Decembers, they're all archived on NERC's website. And look at the forecasted, uh, forecasted, uh, spending reserves to be, to be had in different regions and by state throughout, uh, Canada and the United States. Um, most customers will experience at least one, I know where I live, we experience probably one to two interruptions a year on electric service. But it's very rare you experience an interruption on gas service. And the only reason I mention that again is just to underscore why natural gas is so reliable. It's underground. And so I wanted to bring that up tonight. Um. We would like Chafe County to lead the way and, uh, and express to the state that energy choice for the customer is something that really matters. Uh, you know, when you look at affordability, reliability. And when customers look at that, it's no wonder that most Coloradans want the ability to choose their energy source. They want to choose how they heat their homes. They want to choose how they run their television sets. They want to choose how they cook. They want to choose what kind of fireplace they have, whether it's electric or gas. Eighty percent of Coloradans, according to a survey, uh, done last fall by the Coloradans for Energy Access Group. Eighty percent of Coloradans expressed that they would like to retain the ability to choose their energy for their homes. And their businesses on that. And, um, and that's what we're here to do. We're here to help Buena Vista, um, as, uh, you know, as I mentioned during my remarks a few weeks ago. Uh, I want to act as a resource. I'm part of a larger team. We want to be a resource, provide information, provide, uh, anything we can to you guys. Um, uh, one of the, one set of comments mentioned, uh, the Gas Technology Institute. You know, that's a great entity. It originated with Illinois Institute of Technology. And provides testing on all sorts of equipment and things like that. And so I would encourage, as you look at the codes, uh, code changes that may be proposed by the county. If we can help with, uh, GTI or with any other group facilitate getting information for you guys, we certainly will. So, um, thank you. And I can answer a few questions if you have some, or I can attempt to.
Any questions?
These studies where you compare electric versus gas, are you, are these? Are the electric based on like baseboard electric or, or an electric furnace? Or is it based on like the newer, more efficient heat pumps? Or are you unsure which they're based on?
No, that's a really good question. Um, the, uh, the GTI studies, which is where most of our, um, uh, cost comparisons come from. The GTI studies taking into account the model or, or the, uh, the type of device. And, and you guys may be familiar with those too. They, they take into account the type of device, the, uh, model manufacturer of the device. The rates paid within a zip code and the, uh, and they compare those to another device, be it propane, electric, natural gas. And so that's how GTI does their work. There are other groups too, who, who do similar work in the country. I'm just more familiar with GTI.
I would just ask that we take everything we're being presented with, no offense person, with a grain of salt. Atmos Energy is a tens of billions of dollars worth of, it, we're a company based in Texas. It's one of the largest distributors of natural gas in the world. And the gas industry runs GTI, right? Like all of these studies are funded and paid for by the natural gas industry. To demonstrate the natural gas is whatever they want it to be to sell it to us. So frankly, I'm not happy that we've invited an oil and gas company to come and present to us on the benefits of oil and gas. But I, I would ask that we really think about the source of this information as we consider it in this discussion.
And the same was Sangre Cristo's presentation because he would be lurking from electric companies. So.
Yes, Sangre Cristo being a co-op though, right? That we have local representation and people that live here. Atmos Energy is a five thousand person oil and gas company, you know, that, that lives.
This really isn't just to be a political discussion though.
I, I mean, I'm not saying this is, this is political by nature. There is no way to avoid the fact that a conversation around oil and gas and affordable housing costs is political. But I'm just saying, if we're, if we're going to talk about the studies, we need to be very clear with ourselves about where those studies come from. They come from Atmos and the ten other largest oil and gas companies in the world. That's who funds that institute.
If I may, we're not an oil and gas exploration or production company. We're a, only a natural gas distribution utility.
I think we're kind of staffed as that. We're trying to invite a diverse perspective. And so you have Atmos, you have Sangre, you have, um, the other side of it too, that also provides assumptions into their studies. And so, um, the opportunity, so yes, take a grain of salt with all of it and try to come to a conclusion, whatever that may be on your guys' side. So.
Yes, it's just when we, you know, hear presentations from the state energy office, they are not incentivized. Yes, it's just when we, you know, hear presentations from the state energy office, they are not incentivized one way or the other, right? In the way that a private corporation is, so.
Any questions for Mr. Jones or? All right, well, thank you.
I I do have one question.
Oh, wait, there is a question.
Always, yeah. Um, I think there's, we've, we've gotten some information about a significant new law passed in twenty twenty one. State Senate Bill twenty one two sixty four, the Clean Heat Bill. This requires the state's gas utilities to develop clean heat plants to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Do you see in the future greenhouse gas emissions going down from the use of natural gas?
Well, they've gone, I don't have the statistic in front of me, but they've gone down tremendously uh since. I I uh, let's see, I I think. Other utilities, uh other utilities have targets as well. Um, and I I don't, forgive me, I don't know about the electric utilities targets. But um natural gas utilities have have targets as well, and I'll be glad to provide those. Since twenty fifteen, I I will cor- I'll I'll corroborate this for you. But since twenty fifteen, Atmos Energy's targets uh have uh for for reductions. Have Atmos Energy has met seventy percent of their target for, I think it's a twenty thirty or twenty thirty two.
I think this, yeah, this is, I think by twenty thirty. Gas utilities must achieve, must reduce greenhouse gas emissions by twenty two percent.
And we've, we've, we've met, we're, we're at seventy, I believe we're at seventy percent of our target for that reduction, yes. And and that's, that's why we're here to advocate an all of the above approach.
I just said, I mean, there there's regulatory pressure on all forms of energy to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you for.
Thank you, thank you guys, thank y'all.
Like Sangre is.
Evening, um my name is Sarah Kreitz, I'm the CFO at Sangre de Cristo Electric. And um also with me tonight is Mike Allen. He's our business development, development specialist, excuse me. Um, I just want to start off by saying thank you for your service. I've been to a few of these meetings in the last six months. And they are long and laborious, and so I live in the town of Buena Vista, and so I sincerely appreciate it. Um, I'd also like to extend our apologies on behalf of our CEO Gary Kelly. He couldn't be here tonight, he usually attends these things, um but he's out of town. I also want to briefly acknowledge that there are a few items in the previous presentation that may warrant clarification. And while I don't intend to focus on those points right now, uh Mike and I are happy to address any questions that the trustees may have. Regarding that presentation um during the discussion period. This evening, we're here to speak specifically to S D C E A's position on the electric preferred amendment to the building code in your packet. Um, there is a letter from our CEO Gary Kelly outlining S D C A stance. And I won't read the full letter tonight, uh as I know you guys can read it. But I would like to share the first two paragraphs with you and the audience to ensure our position is clearly understood. So this is from the letter. At S D C A, our commitment as a member owned electric cooperative, which I want to add, we are a not for profit five oh one C twelve. Um, we do not function to make a profit. Um, we have the best interest of our fourteen thousand members. We proudly represent across five counties in central Colorado. Recognizing the diversity of perspectives on the current proposal and our consumer members' needs. We believe it is most appropriate to maintain the neutral position. If this proposal is implemented, S D C E A is fully prepared to meet the increased demands of our system. And ensure dependable service to all the members in the future. Our primary role remains unchanged to provide safe, reliable and cost conscious electric service to power the lives of our members. So thank you for having us. Um, we're happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this proposal at Sangre de Cristo.
Questions for Sangre?
Why is our electricity more expensive than the rest of the state? If you're not for profit, and I realize that stakeholders get money back every dear year in credit on their bill. But why is our electricity so expensive to keep our dollars?
That is, that is a great question. So when you're comparing a rural electric cooperative compared to, let's say, an Excel Energy or a Black Hills Energy. Um, we serve less people per mile of line. So we have eight services per mile of line, whereas in a city or a more urban area, they would have. Twenty to fifty services per mile of line. And so just the density of those that they serve, they can spread those costs to more people. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we have to pay for the same amount of infrastructure, but we have less people paying for electricity overall.
So if we're not being gas use also compared from a small community to a large city. They would still have less infrastructure. They would still have to do the same infrastructure for a small community as a big community, yeah.
I think gas, gas infrastructure maybe was costly to maintain.
That and Atmos Energy or any gas utility for that matter is beside me, um the propane company here in town. But they also, it's like Excel Energy, they have a lot of customers that they can spread those costs to. So even if it's a rural area, that rural area may be subsidized by those larger towns.
On that note, haven't we seen an increase of electricity users here? But yet our cost was also rate. So if we have more people on the service with that, that explanation, it would make me think it would cost less over time. And it feels like.
Yeah, I think that's a great, I mean, if we can sell, if we could sell more kilowatts, there is potential that we could level out our costs. Um, interestingly enough, we're very weather driven on ourselves. And so we actually sold lack, less power in twenty twenty four than we did in twenty twenty three. And so even though we're seeing more homes being all electric, um that we see our surface territory growing. We're actually not selling more energy. And a lot of that has to do with the efficiencies that are being put to these homes, which is a fantastic thing that we fully support. So ironically, we're not selling more power. And we aren't, we don't have a lot of industry here. And so most of our um revenue comes from our residential class, which also puts a higher burden on our residential class.
So adding more energy efficient and and making that. It won't actually, we probably won't see a reduction in our electricity cost with that.
Yeah, I'll let Mike get on that.
One other thing, again, Mike Allen, I apologize for the froggy way through, it's been a long day. Um, one of the things also, as Sarah has mentioned, we are primarily residential. We have no industry. When you think about large loads, let's say like a Black Hills Energy or an Excel. They have, let's say, the Kewa Creek mining and mill area, they, again, Excel would have up in Les. They have the Climax Mine, these are huge, huge operations that require a lot of electricity. So that's where they make some of their profits is in that industry. We don't have any industry. Actually, our largest customer is actually our correctional facility, which is important obviously to this community as well as the state. And that is the largest uh consumer we have, but they're a member of ours too. We have very little commercial to speak of relative to uh the area that we serve. And remember, we're serving portions of five counties. And so we're covering twenty two hundred square miles. We have uh eighteen hundred miles of line, as Sarah has mentioned. Only eight customers or numbers uh per line pay those. Beyond that, what's also important to remember is because of our location. We are in a, in a location that's very preferred for second homeowners. And so roughly thirty five to forty percent of our members are only here part time, which means they're not paying. They're not buying kilowatt hours, they're not buying energy for many months of the year. So we have to distribute that cost between the people that are here. And, you know, our commercial accounts and that sort of thing. Um, one other thing that I think is really important is when we look at energy use for our members. Remember, our members are members of the community. They're, they're the, the business owners here, the residential, uh you know, your uh essentially your citizenry. They're our members, they own us, we are here only to serve them, okay? Sixty plus percent of our members heat their homes, which is the primary use of energy in a home. They heat their homes with propane first, followed by natural gas, followed by electricity. And that's the order in which our members heat their homes. So we're not selling a lot of electricity to those members simply because they don't have, let's say, natural gas available to their homes. Or they prefer natural gas in their homes. And so what we're trying to do, as Sarah has mentioned, is to be neutral in terms of taking a position. On this, this adoption of a code or a recommendation to you. However, we are here to serve our members. And so that's what we want to to communicate to you tonight. We have the capacity and we have been upgrading our lines, we have been increasing our conductor sizes on those lines that we're rebuilding. When, when it comes to reliability, one of the things that we've done, and we're doing this throughout our territory, is to connect our substations to each other. So as an example, the town of Buena Vista is largely served from the substation that's just north of our facility. So if you go to the headquarters and just take a look out back, that's our main substation. That's the largest substation that we have in our territory. We have another substation up at uh Twin Lakes, and we have another one down on uh just off Chalk Creek. Those three substations distribute the power from the transmission lines. Okay, I'll get into that in just a second. Distribute the transmission lines to us. We now have an ability to feed the town of Buena Vista from the each of the substations, not just the one in town. So that's something that we have done in recent years. We expended quite a bit of money to build express feeders between those substations such that. If there is an outage, let's say, at the B D cell. And we still have access to our Ray Lewis up at Twin Lakes or down on Chalk Creek. We can bring power back into town and still keep businesses and residents running. So we're striving to increase our reliability relative to the outages that you have experienced maybe recently. It is true that Excel Energy was the reason for that because Excel, Excel Energy is the company. That Tri-State are generation and transmission company. Provides power tube through Excel lines to get to us because Tri-State doesn't have transmission assets here. And the southern part of our territory and the west of the area is Black Hills Energy that transmits uh the power that we then distribute. So again, it's a complicated uh equation here, but what we're trying to to do is to give you a perspective what it's like to operate. Be very rural cooperative, and we have the lowest energy sales of any cooperative in Colorado. And then if you look at it countrywide, it would lean in terms of what we provide. And we don't have a lot of revenue to support that.
So when folks talk about, I think we're conflating energy costs like a bill with energy cost per kilowatt hour, right? And I imagine with energy preferred, as lots of communities have adopted this, maybe their kilowatt hour cost has not gone down. But a lot of the energy preferred is about driving up just efficiency, making sure our buildings are not wasting energy. And so in that way, we should expect energy bills to go down over time for individual homeowners, right? Like the cost per kilowatt hour may stay the same, but your bill should go down because of just the efficiency alone. Is that right?
Yes. We, and again, when we look at the energy use in a home, we look at it holistically. Whatever energy source you're using, whether it be natural gas or propane or electricity. We want to make sure that the building envelope is fully insulated, you have good windows, all of those things. You wanna, you want to make sure that the envelope is good. And so that's where modern building codes and energy codes make a lot of difference, okay? So we don't want our members to have homes that are inefficient in that regard. Now beyond that, if you want to talk individual appliances, uh a question had come up earlier about heat pumps, okay? With the new technology cold climate heat pumps, which a few years ago I couldn't stand up here and make this statement. The energy efficiency on those heat pumps is far in excess of what it's ever been throughout the history of heat pumps. And they've been around a long time, decades, literally. However, they have not been suitable for our environment at eight thousand feet. Uh where we have some cold winters and that sort of thing, these cold climate heat pumps. Through technological advances now are far more efficient than electric baseboard than old heat pumps. And then when you look at even propane and natural gas, for every kilowatt hour of energy you put into that, you get. At least three kilowatt hours of heat out of that. And that's true of any um fossil fuel. Fossil fuels have to be derated, if you will, at our elevation, because you have to take that fossil fuel, you have to burn it. And then you turn that into energy, right? And then you use that energy at your home. So there's a loss of efficiency simply because of the combustion aspect. Beyond that, though, that that electric heat pump is taking the heat from outside the home. And bringing it in, and you're using refrigerator technology. It's like taking the heat from inside your refrigerator and putting it in your home and cooling, if you will, the inside. So what's it doing, it's heating the whole. You can run a refrigerator backwards and forwards, and you can do the same thing. So a heat pump allows you to heat your home in the winter time by taking the heat from the external environment. And in the summertime, it allows you to cool your home by doing the same thing. So when you're looking at three times the level of efficiency. Where, let's say, electric baseboard is one to one, for every kilowatt hour of energy I put into that, I get a kilowatt hour of energy out of it. These heat pumps now are three plus um ratio, we call that a coefficient of performance. That's one of the metrics that's commonly used when you talk about. And so, and we can certainly get into greater detail on these things uh in another meeting. But again, I think our basic message is we're taking as a cooperative a neutral position. And so we don't have a recommendation for you this evening, but we're here to provide.
I think for us, we need to get back to our focus here, which is, I think, um, do we want to go for electric preferred or not?
Just want to make sure I'm understanding the options correctly. Right, the state and county have both already updated codes to increase efficiency?
No, neither uh has, and so from a state level, they uh basically mandated a twenty one uh energy code. Which the county and all municipalities adopted uh late twenty two or twenty three went into effect early twenty four. Um, right now, the county is basically looking for resolutions of support for them to adopt. Which would affect all the different municipalities. And so the county is not doing anything until the municipalities voice the support or not. And so um the state level is not mandating, mandated at this time. And so it's discussion from bottom up this time. Um, and so the decision tonight is basically, um, you know, I've got it kind of penciled in for the resolution to be included on uh upcoming meeting. Um, so it's not necessarily a request for a decision tonight. Um, really, I think the decision is, yeah, bring the resolution to us at an upcoming meeting. Um, or unless you're adamant and just say, you know, we've had discussions and we don't feel like pursuing anything further. So the motion would be out for resolution that would be provided at a later meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other comments?
Yeah, I, you know, it was interesting to hear the different uh. Points of view, I really liked the explanation of of heat pumps. I think that's a really important thing to consider. But I think there's a mentality that heat electricity or electric heat is insanely expensive. And it has been for a very long time, but I think that is changing with technology. So I think that's an important thing to consider. Um, and also, you know, I like that if this isn't requiring everyone to use electricity, it still preserves choice. But I I do think that if a homeowner needs to change from gas to electric, it keeps it an easy thing to change. Where if we don't allow any infrastructure, it makes it a lot more expensive. You know, I grew up in the northeast. You know, I grew up in the Northeast where everything was heated with oil. And when oil prices went up, it got real, real hard for my family to have heat. And I think, you know, having the option to be able to switch to something would have been huge. But that wasn't an option when I was a kid. And I think having something where you're something like this where it preserves choice, it incentivizes to be more efficient. It is, you know, it sounds like the state laws and whatnot are going that way. And, you know, making a cost to change later on for someone easier and better in case, you know, natural gases are going to be cheap and affordable forever. Just like coal wasn't and heating oil wasn't. I don't know anyone who uses heating oil back on the East Coast as much as we did when I was a kid. But, you know, I think supporting things are going to be better for the environment in the long run. I think is, I think this is an easy first step. So I'd be in favor of bringing this as a consideration for resolution. That's all I gotta say about that.
I generally agree with Devin. I think it's, you know, again, we're planning for housing that's supposed to last fifty to a hundred years. Technology will continue to change, but we need to plan for especially efficiency. Mostly, this is building codes that have to do with ensuring builders build efficient homes so that we're not costing homeowners more money every month because their homes are leaking heat or leaking cool air. I think generally, we also have a responsibility to our community to take a lead or at least some position on environmental issues. You know, this community is going to really struggle if fire insurance becomes the number one thing that's driving up monthly housing prices. And, you know, I think we're talking a little bit about affordability of homes here. But I think generally, the folks we're hearing about opposing this are builders, they're developers. It's the gas company and distributor. And we also hear from them about affordability and cost issues when it comes to parking and being low. And building affordable housing is expensive. So I don't necessarily take that to be the most important thing, that it's going to cost builders more upfront to build homes with additional codes if those codes also protect consumers first and the environment, which I think is really important. Because, you know, like Devin was talking about, it is really expensive to flip over your infrastructure later. And I just think it's irresponsible to treat this like an affordable housing issue. And we have a lot of other levers we can pull, like short-term rentals. And, you know, it's interesting to hear folks coming from the EDC talking about the need for affordable housing. When I saw the EDC oppose the ballot measures for property tax and sales tax increase for affordable housing. So I just think it's a nice talking point for folks who are not actually putting their money where their mouth is when it comes to supporting affordable housing. And I think we're here from the community, people who live here, you know, that this, that taking environmental action is important. So I will also support it.
I do absolutely agree environmental action is important. And I also feel like efficiency doesn't have to be tied to your specific energy choice. I think efficiency is overall talking about the envelope, talking about how that power is supplied, not what power is supplied. And so I have a hard time saying energy preferred versus having both available. I personally, I I see the environment conversation as well. But then Tri-State, who provides ninety-five percent of our power, is talking about making sure that they have mixed-use energy, including natural gas. And they're still using. So for me, it's the same conversation. I think having that environmental conversation is important. But in this rural of an area, losing redundancy in heating choices and options by making one preferred over the other, I feel like is a little bit of an overreach of efficiency, yes, environmentally. Putting that at the forefront, yeah, absolutely. I don't, I don't know if I firmly understand why making it electric preferred when our electricity is coming from a natural gas powered plant.
Can I tell, can I?
I would love it. Yeah, I would love more.
So Tri-State has to follow state laws, national laws around the mix of energy use. And they generally do it based on cost. Right now, natural gas is cheaper, but they have built in more and more and more renewable energy over time, especially as the state of Colorado has invested in additional solar and wind farms, like in the eastern plains. They use natural gas because it's available. But electricity preferred means that we are not stuck in an only natural gas option long term. Because as Tri-State and other utilities move towards more renewables, if they choose to, electricity is the only option if we don't want to use anything but gas. So I actually think what you're saying is in line with what I'm saying. If we want a diversity of choice, we actually need to lean towards electricity because otherwise our only option is gas and propane. Do you know what I'm saying? And this isn't, so it's about incentives, right? We incentivize things.
Right, right. So if it's electricity ready versus electricity preferred. In my opinion, electricity preferred takes away the option of choice for that builder because they're going to incentivize electricity. Where electric ready provides still that diversity. And and we've heard from some builders that they're going to choose electric because it's better for them in the long run. And that's great, but it's not best for everybody. And and I don't know, there's a big piece of me thinking about that fifty, eighty year. We don't know what's going to happen with electricity. We we don't, we don't know what's gonna happen. We know with natural gas, eventually it'll run out, right? But we don't know what's going to happen with electricity. And so we don't really know by making more people use it. It may not make it any, it may make it more expensive. We really don't know. And so removing that that redundancy in heating, especially in this environment. If we were in a big city, completely different conversation, right? But we're not. We're, we're just now getting service of electricity from more than one substation. And we're about to have an exponential percentage of housing added into our market. We know that they're ready for it and that's great. I just, I I guess I'm struggling with removing, with going energy preferred over energy ready.
Andrew, what do you got?
We always cut Cindy out.
Cindy, go for it.
Well, maybe I just wait till long enough and then I'll say what I want to say. I I am not in favor of electric preferred. Building codes were made to ensure that your building was safe, you know, bring no harm. The building code should not be deciding one energy preference over the other. Both gas and net and electric have both been proven to be safe and usable. So I really don't think we should prefer them over the other. It is to do that, you are increasing the cost of affordable housing. And any unnecessary code that is made increases the house, the cost of housing. And I honestly feel in this case that the government is overstepping their bounds on the rights of their citizens to have a choice. Electrical costs in our valley are not cheap. For people that are on fixed incomes, I worry about doing the all-electric preferred because it will increase their costs. And we have a lot of people in here in our area that are on fixed incomes. An example would be, my mother lives in a sixteen hundred square foot house. Jan, in January, her electric bill was around five hundred and fifty dollars. When you're living on a retirement, that's excessive. We took up the wood burning stove option away from my mom because she's legally blind and we didn't want her building fires. Well, that's what happened to her not substituting or heat. But there's many things that we can do to be green, to worry about the environment. Our business, Swisher Diesel, has, it runs on electricity, but we use a waste oil burner furnace to heat our shop. And yes, it does use some electricity, but it is keeping used motor oil out of the environment. I do care about the environment. There's different ways of people caring about the environment, not just that electric is, they think it's cleaner. Both industries are working on doing better. If if we cut one back, how do we know which one is going to be the best in the end to come up with the best conservative places? If we're really that worried about our valley, why are we building over three thousand square foot homes? Nobody needs a home that big. They're making a bigger carbon footprint than my little house ever will, but it serves its purpose. There, people can serve in different ways. I can say I use a wood burning stove. And you can tell me that I'm polluting the air and I'm telling you I'm keeping some of the dead wood out of the forest that could catch on fire during a forest fire. Everybody recycling, everybody does something in another way. And I think it takes a combination of things to improve our environment, not just one. And I can't go with this one.
Thank you. Chris?
Just a couple of quick points. I like the idea of bringing this to another meeting because the last two meetings we've had with this topic, we've had really good public comments. So I like the opportunity for another meeting to have public comment again. And then Brian, just a question about Pacha. Have they, have they had a decision yet on this?
No, as far as Matt's presentation and the timeline associated with that, there is one presentation you and they haven't discussed it since, correct?
No, we're still working to coordinate a follow-up, but they have a new decision.
So, yeah, no, actually, on that side.
I have a question. It seems like there were some, some times in the past where if you, if you wanted to do something to your house that required a building permit, you had to also bring your house up to to a current permit status. It had to do with windows and sidewalks and that kind of stuff. Is that, do we, with this, are we running into having to bring your house up to, you know, the secure envelope provision?
That's a really good question. I would want to confirm that with Chad before saying yes or no. But yeah, I think to your point that that can be a requirement. And it really usually depends on the level of, yeah, building that you're doing within your home. But certainly accessibility requirements. And then, you know, like, for example, if somebody's going from a single family to a duplex or something like that, you're now changing your use so significantly that we would expect all of that to be brought up to current code. So I would say like small remodels, and I don't want to speak on behalf.
Fifty to seventy-five percent.
Right.
With our historic home stock, that could be a pretty huge, if we're wanting to keep our historic home stock and we do an electric preferred, and now you have your roof, there's a hole that keeps in. And now you're taking your eighteen nineties home and would have to get it up to electric. Is that, so that that could greatly reduce our historic home stock. Only if you're completely remodeling your home, right? And just like seventy percent expansion?
Yeah, I think.
I think that would be a really good clarification. I think it's a really important question, too.
Jeff, did you hear my question?
I'm here, I'm here. I'm sorry, I couldn't get to the mic enough. Could you repeat it again, Mayor? I apologize.
What I'm concerned about is that if I want to change out my windows in my house or, you know, put in a different kitchen, if I have to do something that requires me to go and get a building permit, does it also then affect whether I need to bring my house up to electric preferred?
Yeah, I I'd have to look at the details. I haven't reviewed it that carefully, so I I don't know for sure. I'd have to look. I'm sorry, I haven't really been looking at all these requirements and exactly what they, what triggers the requirements. I could get you the answer. I just don't know offhand.
Yeah, okay.
My expectation is it wouldn't, it would have to be a significant revision, you know, probably, there's probably some trigger, but I I just don't know for sure. Sorry to not be helpful on that one.
No, it's all right. We'll get it.
Yeah, I like how Chris put, I think, you know, you know, I think this would be a good thing to bring back in a, in another meeting to, you know, just to get more public comment from people. I think that's a good point.
Does seem to me that it adds a significant cost to the building. And whether that's worth the trade-off of becoming more green, you know?
Well, and monthly energy savings too for that house. Yeah.
Share a few thoughts. I feel like the, some of these things were kind of talking past each other. And it's kind of shaping up to be either a pro or anti-environmental issue, which I don't think that's at all a fair assessment of this. I, I feel like this electric preferred code amendment, the juice may not be worth the squeeze. And what I mean by that, our code that we adopted, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one IUC, we adopted just last year, requires all houses to have both forms of energy pumped to them regardless of which one you choose. So that's already baked in to every new structure that's built. That's my understanding. What's that?
It doesn't require that you have gas.
It doesn't require gas, but if you use gas, you must have electric. So so that if you say I want to use gas, your house is already wired for electric, so you can switch at any time in the future. So we already have that baseline covered in our building code. That new building code also has a very stringent and elevated envelope performance requirements for the structures. There's a ton of energy efficiency that we have just previously adopted. We've heard a number of people speak to that. That's impacted the building costs. I think the, the technology is improving on heat pumps dramatically. We've heard them talk about that. I think there's also quite a bit of movement on the gas side with respect to greenhouse gas emissions and high-efficiency gas appliances. But it sounds like from, I think when Chad was here last time, sixty-five percent of homes are going all electric now anyway. So the market pressure is already there. The increases in heat pump efficiency is already there. The market pressure already exists. The double plumbing of homes that get, that want to use gas, you have to have electric anyway. So we've got that covered. We've got the high energy efficiency for all the envelopes. What I see this code doing is just very blatantly discouraging the use of gas by, by, by having higher construction costs if you want to use gas. And that is in some way the government putting our hand on a market and tipping a market in one, one direction. It does discourage choice, you know, for you. Efficiency is there for both structures, you know, which, which energy source do I want to use as a developer or a resident? So I just don't feel like this is, the juice is really not worth the squeeze. I think in one of the, on one of the pieces of information, we got the greenhouse gas emissions from residences are like six percent of the entire greenhouse gas emissions for the state. And so it's really a small sliver that we're pushing on here. So I just don't feel like the juice is worth the squeeze because the market pressure already exists and you're adding costs to a house that wants to use gas. That's my opinion.
Does that mean your opinion would be to oppose?
I, no, you know, I guess more information could come to light, but I think if we had to vote tonight, I would probably oppose.
Okay, what do you want to do?
Sounds like the bold struggle was to bring resolution back and have public comment. I can bring that at the next meeting. The one piece information requested specifically was the threshold for coming into compliance with the updated code, whether it's fifty percent, seventy-five percent.
Whatever would trigger.
Yeah, we can acquire that information, get the, and yeah, kind of go from there. Whatever.
What, given the like timeline lag on adopting codes and then how that feeds into future developments? If this, if we pass a resolution and then the county adopted the code, how long would you just like ballpark it would take until new builds had to incorporate these standards?
It would be on the, the county commissioners. You know, it would be to their discretion to a certain extent. I think their ordinances are similar to ours. It takes effect within a thirty day period.
You know, it would be to their discretion to a certain extent. I think their ordinances are similar to ours. It takes effect within a thirty day period. They slow rolled the building code um, to allow sufficient time for those guys in the middle of the process. Um, hard to say how they would do it. They're kind of in the kind of the desire to slowly roll it out um, on this one. Um, and yeah. Recently approved subdivisions, this will dictate. You know, at the time of building permit, regardless of subdivision. So when a new structure pulls a permit, so realistically, um, it could be a couple of few months, I would say.
From the time of its pass.
Yeah.
Can I'd like to know exact cost because I feel like I've heard a lot of different things. I'm like, how much it will actually?
I think that's what you're gonna get right now. Unfortunately, I think you're gonna have, we've got um, surveys and we've got data from. Uh, varying sources and so um, unfortunately, I don't think we're in a position to say this is the exact impact.
Right.
Um, and you know, I wish we could say better, but um, you know, obviously a lot of different entities uh, from the studies provided from Chad. That were uh, related to you um, to add miss the same grade um. You know, a lot of time and money was spent on that to say that us as staff is going to be able to provide any. Um, more concrete numbers. Unfortunately, I don't think that's possible.
Yeah.
I do think something that would be a benefit to the board and hopefully we can invite Chad back again to help clarify these points and answer some questions. Um, but one of the things that we talked about, I know when Chad was here a couple of weeks ago, it was kind of a comment that was made right at the end is. And you do preserve choice with electric preferred, but I think you do decentivize mixed fuel. And what does that look like? And, and kind of this point system that Brian talked about right at the very end there. You have to meet a certain amount of points, higher points if you do mixed fuel versus if you do electric preferred. And so that's how it becomes. Uh, more expensive if you're trying to do that mixed fuel approach. Chad does have some ideas because within our control, we could take out pieces of that or we could maybe reduce the point system. And he hasn't been able to dive into it in any great detail because really unless all municipalities are on board. Um, putting in the effort to really draft the code uh, is probably not high on his list, but I think he can better answer kind of. What he's looking at if he was to start to omit some of these things that would decentivize what that looks like. So I would. Personally for me, and not that I'm mad at it all, but that would help answer some questions that I have in terms of that point system that I don't really think that we talked about a whole. And we've reached out to Chad a couple of times. Nothing's concrete yet, but he could at least provide some better context of what he's thinking. Should this move forward um, across the county? And so we don't have to adopt electric preferred exactly as it's written. Um, but I think again, that's going to go back to Chad to really help um, shine a light on, on what, what direction they're headed in.
On that point, if he comes back, I mean, to me, it just seems counterintuitive to say you can build a less efficient house if you use only electric. I mean, that's a different, that's a different way of describing it, but in effect, that's what it's doing is setting different efficiency goals and you can build a less efficient house if you agree to only use electric.
Yeah. Chad's gonna have a lot of questions.
All right, is that all you need?
I believe so, yeah.
The last item of our business items has to do with cottonwood. Seven cottonwood.
Quick.
A little break?
Yeah.
Sure?
This one, wait, do you mind?
I think the next one's a little like ten minutes. Or less.
Can't wait ten minutes.
I got like three minutes left in my life.
Well, go to the bathroom one more time.
Okay.
Yeah. I know, we don't even.
Uh, we need to read back and make.
Okay, who's gonna be in charge of one oh seven cottonwood?
That guy.
Oh, good, okay.
Is that guy me? Okay, I wasn't sure who you were pointing to, yeah, I'd be happy. I gotta earn my keep here at some point, you guys. I hardly ever say anything anymore. Um, although we do do a fair amount of work behind the scenes, so I'm, I'm not just a pretty face on your Zoom. Yeah, really, really briefly, this one's pretty straightforward, but you know, we need your approval. Um. It's in your, I don't know if we have anything for the actual screen, but it's in your packet. Um, there is a parcel of property um, that the Abrams Family Ventures. Um, owns near the corner of Centennial Plaza and Cedar Street. And there's a little triangle portion that has been omitted from deeds for a number of years. And part of that little triangle portion, that's great, I see it's showing up on the screen here. There we are, yep, awesome. And part of that little triangle portion, um, kind of abutting. Um, the street there, yep, perfect, thank you. Uh, was a right of way that the city vac, or the city, the town vacated in nineteen fifty-nine. And um. When you, and so the Abrams Family Ventures LLC that owns the property, when they. When you want to basically assert that you have ownership over a portion of property that's not perfectly set forth in your deeds. You have to bring what's called a quiet title action. It goes to court. The court reviews your claim and the court can, if you've proven your case, basically enter an order that awards ownership of that property to you. And so that's what they're doing here. Um, they've named the town and they've named the estate of Florence Shields who appears to maybe have at some point owned. The remainder of the triangle, not the vacated right of way. As defendants in this case. We took a look at the title work. We agree, this was vacated, the town doesn't have a claim. And therefore what we usually do in these kinds of cases is file, it's called a disclaimer of interest. We just say, thanks for serving us. The town doesn't have any claim, we disclaim any interest to it. Everybody else proceed with the case. We don't want to have anything to do with it. You can have any interest that we have in the property. Um, and you know, if we think we had an ownership interest, we let you know and. We could contest it, but we don't think you do because the town vacated this part uh, nineteen fifty-nine. They had to name us because we had an interest at one point, just to make sure they get uh, effective court order. So our recommendation is, is that you just give approval to us to file a disclaimer and interest. Um, and save you, save you all some money and get you out of the case basically. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Sounds good to me. Anybody got questions?
Pretty simple one this time.
Yeah. You need a motion on it?
Yeah, if you, maybe a motion uh, authorizing the town attorney to file a disclaimer and interest in this case.
Sub moved, second.
Okay, so we've got Row and Rice. Did you get that motion or?
Just to listen to it.
Yeah, okay, good, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Absolutely, it's a pretty simple one. Thank you.
So now we're at trustee staff interaction and. I don't think I have anything to go into tonight.
Ice rink winner?
Oh, yeah, we're gonna get to it. Yeah.
Do you want to do it now or you want to do it?
Sure, let's do it now. Makes more sense now. Okay, so there's a letter in your packet under, behind the. Um, information only page that has to do with um. A letter, it's just a letter of support for the idea of the ice rink. And apparently the ice rink uh, folks have managed to lease some land and they have coolers and boards and. All kinds of things where they want to open an ice rink.
Is it still the miracle stuff?
It is.
The boards are, but they also. Also got chillers and things from, from uh, Colorado College when they moved there. They built a whole big new ice arena. So at first the, the ice rink would not be a covered ice rink.
Does anyone know about the miracle? Yeah. That's it. One tall story.
Yeah, motion that I could sign the letter.
I make motion to sign the letter.
I second that.
Okay, so we've got Rowan Hike. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Yeah, the motion passes. Okay, I still don't have anything. Devon?
I still don't have anything either.
Um, Maggie?
Uh, just super good con thing uh, with P N Z last week. It was one of the last steering committee meetings. For the comp plan, um, so it's coming up soon. There was just one question that came out of it that I just wanted to make sure I didn't lose track of was, it was a Jeff question. Um, if P N Z or Board of Trustees has the final um. Stamp of approval for the comp plan and, and none of us could recall the bylaws offhand, so.
Yeah, I can answer that. Yeah, the way it works is that the um, uh, planning commission basically. Recommends approval uh, and it's subject to uh, the Board of Trustees sign off.
Awesome, thank you. It, it was been a really fascinating process, so thanks Andrew for peeking in on Wednesday. It was really great. That's all I got.
Great. Cindy?
Um, gonna put a. Put it out there for the Arbor Day celebration. Um, the tree board. Put a lot of work into this. They'll be eating away on little ceiling trees or uh, blue proof. Blue spruce seedling or a mountain mahogany shrub. And they'll have an information booth from nine to twelve at the. Splash Park and they'll have all kinds of literature on how to take care of trees and. The planting in our area and I'm not sure what they are, but they're having family friendly activities that are for all ages. And on the same weekend because. Sean just has so much spare time on his hands. They're doing the, the town cleanup and um, they had a flyer out that tells you the stuff that they can't take and the, the stuff that they. That they will take and it's a good way of, if you don't get to the dump, to get your area cleaned up and. It's good benefit to the citizen.
Sean, are you gonna be pushing a cart around town saying? Bring out your junk? Throw out your dead?
Yeah.
Bring out your junk?
It's free except for screens.
And yeah. And that's on the seventeenth, on the fifteenth and sixteenth, the tree board and stuff will be planting. Their adopted, doctor trees and replacing some of the, so if you were on Main Street, you could see how they plant a tree. You could offer to help plant a tree. It'd be a good experience.
Yeah, that's great. You've helped with that for a long time.
I enjoy the tree board. I, I hope I'm still beneficial to the board.
So, and the, there's no fee except for screens, right? Like a TV or?
Yeah, yeah, um, weight. Depending on where we take it, it's either by the pound or by the screen size. I think this year we're going by the pound. This year we're going by the pound and it's glass screen and TVs and flat screen monitors. Most monitors now are not the last, so.
On here it does say that they take pictures, so there's no, no reason to drive by somebody's house and see their old couch sitting out front.
Excellent.
That was it, thank you.
As of Monday, planning will be fully staffed, so I'm super excited to welcome our new planner and I will make sure that I get her here to introduce you. Today we got the CHT homes within the crossing, those four lots. We got the building permits over to the county, so they're under cutting review, but that is another big step in their process. A lot left to do on those ones, but this is a big, a big hurdle for them. Reminder that it is HPC month and that the Historic Preservation Commissioners are doing coffee with commissioners Wednesday morning, so if you're feeling like you want a coffee tomorrow, they will be at the Rose Street from eight to 11. And then I put this in my staff update, but the BV Base Camp, which is the container home development, has offered after I requested a tour for the Board of Trustees. I'm gonna also extend the invite to the Planning and Zoning Commission sometime the first week of June so that you can go and see the units. I, it exceeded my expectations, so I certainly encourage folks, if you're interested to go out there and see it. I've not seen anything like that, developing container, develop, and as you said in your article. It's tricky, it's really tough to meet building code with container homes, so it's definitely been an uphill battle for that project. A unique product, for sure, so I will send an email to trustees to see folks that might be interested. Is there a day of the week or a time of day that just generally works best for the board? I know you guys all have different schedules.
Instead of this meeting?
Fourth Tuesday at seven o'clock.
Yeah. Well, I'll pull together some options and maybe figure out what would work best for the, for the crew here. And like I said, I'll extend it to PNC as well.
Are those ready for occupancy?
They did, we've done our first initial inspection and they've got a few outstanding items, nothing that's major. Really, they're waiting for the asphalt plant to open to do some final public approvals. And speaking of inspections, we did inspections of the boulders today and it was like all hands on deck inspection between planning, Public Works, Chad and his team came up and we did that. So I would say, and Sean can speak to his staff, planning's pretty close on at least the units that they're requesting CL on. I think we were looking at 15 lots, probably feeling pretty good about, I wanna say 11 of them, so they're, they're also getting close to coming online. So that, the BV Base Camp and the Midland Apartments kind of brewing for the early June is what they're targeting. We have a lot coming online in the next couple of months.
It's gonna be very interesting.
Yeah.
Joel?
Nope, nothing.
Brian?
Noticed Officer, Graduate Academy on Thursday, so we'll get a new guy out there leasing FTOs here pretty quick. So that's exciting on that side. Outside of that, nothing pressing.
Jeff, do you have anything?
No, nope. Sorry, I didn't hear, I thought I heard Jeff, but I wasn't sure, so.
Okay. Thank you. Is anyone gonna go to the, the district meeting of the CML on the 14th?
That's tomorrow, right?
It's tomorrow.
Okay, good, so you three are going or more?
And Ed and Paula.
Ed, Paula and I, Brian's out, he had conflicts, but Cindy, Devin, Andrew, Ed and I are planning ongoing and Marika is contemplating it right now. I'll probably go.
Sounds like what I said.
Yeah.
It'll be interesting, it'll, it's kind of like intergovernmental, I looked at the list, but there's a lot more people from surrounding counties. I saw some of the cog people will be there. Buck and, Buck from Silver Cliff, he's a character.
Okay, Paula?
It's good to be back, I appreciate Ed stepping in for me and covering here as well as, you know, all the other duties at the office, so, yeah. Cool, thanks for working with him.
Sean?
Yeah, a couple things, got to, yeah, got to hang out with planning today a little bit, along with Ryan over at Napa. The new meets the old kind of stuff, you know, yeah, 1960 meets 2025 kind of little, little lot stuff there. Really cool to be a part of those. You know, see how our team operates together and connect with the community, thought that was really awesome. Saw the new light bars on the highway.
That's right, yes.
Little, little bit more pop there, like that. Yeah, the, yeah, the town cleanup weekend and and adopt a tree being all together, kind of packed in, kind of allows our team to enjoy a three-day holiday weekend. And yeah, Memorial Day's coming up, following weekend at Paddle Fest and right now working on getting the Division of Water, Upper Arx team, George mostly, and Rachel with Red Water and Public Works get town light full. Get some water in town light here pretty soon. Just jumped up from nothing basically to like 40 CFS.
Looked like a big change today.
Yeah, big change, yeah.
I don't know, it's begun.
I was, you didn't know, but anything uncovered, it just happened, right?
It's just got warm.
Last night we heard it, it was amazing.
That was spring roll.
Yeah, yeah. It was incredible.
Makeup?
I emailed you, you, I emailed back about this, reported it up to the board after our last meeting. But you know, obviously we're having a lot of conversations about the levers we can pull regarding supporting affordable housing in this community. You know, I think we're really struggling to identify the right point of action, whether it's parking fee in lieu or funding mechanisms, et cetera. I think we, I would like to propose that we discuss our short-term rental regulations sometime the next two months or so and start up a conversation about revisiting our caps and our licensing opportunities and things like that. I'd also propose that we start talking about shutting down further allowances on short-term rental permits while we're discussing it and reviewing those caps. We have so many houses coming online in the next year or two in this community and having been bought up and then paid for via short-term rental, I think is just not a good thing for our community. And I think our short-term rental regulations are the best lever we have right now as a town board to address the impact of housing price increases. So I'd like to move that forward and I wanted to know if there are other board members or staff that think that that would be a valuable conversation to revisit.
Well, and it wasn't one that came to the surface when we, when we talked about different areas that we wanted to pursue at like in work sessions.
Yeah, I kind of, when I, when we were having that conversation that we're treating, I was just thinking about out of the ones that are on the list, which, what are the priorities? I didn't really realize there was a chance to like talk about new opportunities. But I think the more we have parking and lieu fee conversations or discussions tonight, you know, it's so obvious that it's the most pressing, you know, thing that most people are thinking about. And I think if that's the case, we have one really strong lever that we haven't revisited for a while.
Do we have any, is there a waiting list? There is six on the waiting list. And the six that are on the waiting list, the category that they fall into is they're either out-of-county homeowners or they're an LLC entity. We still have homes available as far as if you're a Chaypee County resident and this is your second home, they can still get a permit. South Maine residents down there, there are no caps on that.
I have a question on the cap too. As we build more housing in areas that are exempt from the short-term rental cap, does that housing raise the housing stock and thereby increase the percent? So I think there's a problem there, right? Like we're adding short-term rentals to the housing stock, which then increases the amount of housing allowed to get a rental permit. I think the math, I think there's a loophole there that we have to address. And if that's all we did, I think that'd be really important. Does that question make sense to you? Like if caps, it's capped at 6%, but we're adding a bunch of exempted homes that will be short-term rentals that are then raising the overall cap, which increases the number of short-term rental permits allowed.
Yeah, you know, I was on the board and Libby and Cindy, we all worked super hard on creating policy that was tough to create and, you know, obviously we got a lot of blowback and I think where it's at right now is in a good position. I think it does create growth, but also it creates, you know, equity for Chaypee County residents, which I think is something that we really wanted as part of it. I don't really see it as a loophole. I think, you know, as housing stock is added, you know, there is going to be a few, few more short-term rentals, but I think, you know, I don't really see an outcry right now where if we just put a huge cap on short-term rentals that we're just gonna get affordable housing, I don't really see that as it happening. I, you know, that policy took a lot of work to iron out all those details and.
And I think it's a good framework, I'm just saying.
We're just needing to make sure that the program is working how we wanted it.
Yeah, for sure.
And I am not in favor of the number of short-term rentals growing as we increase our housing market.
Right, I agree. Cindy and I almost never agree on anything, so that's important. I think it's a, a big conversation to have, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make sure when we do look at it, I don't want to like get rid of it or change it drastically.
I think I want to, we want to like look at how.
Because I went to those meetings, I was at those meetings.
How long ago were those meetings?
Only a few years ago.
Yeah, but how much inventory have we added since then? That's the other question. So I think it's, I think it's an important revisit, is it working the way that it was intended to work? And will it continue to work into the next five years?
Alright. I've lived through these meetings. Yeah.
I promise to be there in person if we do these meetings.
Thank you. We can't talk about it once and then not talk about it for 10 years.
Oh, it's been like.
We're always told stuff as a living duck.
Bring it back to life.
Yeah. Um, anything else?
We lost a really important community member in a racking accident this week.
Really?
Dan, I call him Dan the Hot Dog Man, he ran the hot dog stand on Main Street.
He's a year old, Dan.
Yeah.
He drowned or?
He, I'm not exactly sure what happened, but his boat flipped on the subway in Idaho and he passed away. So I think that's been weighing heavily on me today and, you know, our community is so small and racking is such a big part of it, so you know, hold your friends close, but I think it's hard to lose such a leader in the community and a shining star, so I'll be thinking about him.
Yeah, and there was another community member, Matt Lane, I don't know personally, but Dan I saw everywhere, you know, he was bartender at Push and Pull, bartender at Viking, sold hot dogs in the back of Lariat.
Yeah, a rap guide.
Rap guy was a security guy.
Mates, no.
Yeah, he was always hustling and working and just a real positive, awesome guy.
Yeah, he's so sweet.
And who was the other one, somebody else?
Matt Lane.
He's a rap guide in town, right?
Yeah, another rap guy. He was on the Seaway River in Idaho. Yeah, super sad. I don't know about anything that's happening yet, it's still very soon it happens.
If people do here though, let's, let's share it, because I'd love to know.
Yeah, I'm sure.
That's coming up, yeah.
I'm sure the Viking or something will do something.
Yes.
Yeah, just, I, I went to, as a member of the public, went and sat in on that joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning and the Comp Plan Steering Committee and it was super helpful personally just to kind of hear who did more value. Those two hours of listening caught me up to speed with everything, so it was super informative. I think it'll be, it'll be good when it comes to the forest. One of the things I did hear come out of that is there, the comp plan may have some content or may speak to short-term rentals. I think there's the discussion that there may be a recommendation to revisit the short-term rental policy, not at the same cadence, but in similar fashion to our water allocation policy. Like that policy doesn't need to just sit on the shelf, the comp plan may recommend a routine reevaluation of that to say, hey, you know, what is, what's working, what's not working. So I think Mika's point is kind of, timing kind of aligns with probably what's coming with the comp plan. And so I think it's, it's worth the consideration to, it's like, maybe it is time to just really reevaluate. I mean, not, not that we're going up or down or changing or anything, but it might be a good idea just to, hey, we should press pause for a minute and let's study this, because there's gonna be some recommendations and thoughts coming from the company. And you would hate to see a very strong objection to short-term rentals while we've just approved a whole bunch more, you know, so maybe just a time for a pause, take time to study. I think we might get that recommendation in the comp plan.
Good. Chris?
This day started 21 hours ago for me, so I'm gonna save whatever I have left for our executive session.
Alright. Good. Anybody else got anything else before the executive session?
Sharon, you don't have to stand.
I do want to welcome Ms. Paula back, it's good to see you sitting in that chair.
It's good to be back, this has been probably one of the hardest 10 weeks of my life.
I did notice, and I should have thought about it, when you went to get the sign-in sheet, you didn't really set up PR on the way back to. It was doing really well, it just wasn't your fastest time.
Lot quicker, I'll get there.
Water.
Okay. I'm gonna need a motion from somebody, which will be.
You need to read it first, Mayor thing.
Read it first.
Okay, the motion is gonna be, I move that the Board of Trustees enter into an executive session. The topic will be, determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to Colorado revised statute, section 24 dash 6 dash 402, 4E. And this is concerning the potential acquisition of water rights.
Sub moves.
So we have Row and Hike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Does anyone oppose? Okay, we have a majority. So we will need everybody in here.